Hi, everyone. If we could start sitting down, we're going to get ready to start the meeting in a minute or two.
any cell phones. Thank you.
Good evening, Malibu. I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of November 3, 2025. This meeting is being held in both a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have a comment, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make sure our discussion is clear for the record and for the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Kamens?
Here.
Commissioner Maza?
Here.
Commissioner Peak?
Here.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Here.
Chair Leonard?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Do the pledge of allegiance. Scott Dietrich, would you please lead us?
Put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as staff recommends with item 4B continued to December 1, 2025, and item 4D to continue to a date uncertain.
Okay. Do we have a consensus? Or do we need a roll call?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamens?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
You, the motion carries.
Okay. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please, Rebecca?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October 24, 2025.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item 2A, written oral communications from the public. Let's see, we got Brian Zen first, you got two minutes. After that, we'll have Arthur Kelly, and then Paul Grisanti. You have one minute donated also.
Yes.
Okay, so you have four total.
Okay. Thank you for having me. Hope you had a good weekend. I'm here again to talk about the PCH roundabout quick build project. I just wanted to raise a few more points that I couldn't raise last time and since having the last meeting. Starstop traffic tends to create more pollution as opposed to driving at a continuous speed. That's my understanding of how it works. Typically, in cities, there's more pollution as opposed to the highways because you're starting and stopping, and that's more RPMs, more petrol being spent. Another point I have to raise is that my street wasn't marked at all on the last drawings I saw. I know it's a work in progress, and there will be changes made, but I just thought that's something that had to be noted. More parking in front of my home will, I think, decrease the privacy that I currently have. I already have people coming up my private street to take photos and look around and walk around my property, and I think having more people parking around my home at PCH and stuff like that would decrease my privacy and security. I think that's one more thing to think about with having more people in the area. Coming out of my street, I'll have to also watch for even more, for more obstacles or people such as the pedestrians, the cyclists, and for the parked cars that will be on PCH now. We haven't been given a specific amount of parking spaces or crosswalks that will be put in. As far as I know, I haven't been given anything like that, any numbers for parking spaces, crosswalks, and for the maximum capacity of the beach as it is. Currently, I'm not sure how many parking spaces are on the beach parking, but La Piedra Beach, which is right at Encinal, is quite small. I'm not sure how many more people it can support visiting parking on the PCH. Also, we will be encouraging more caravans to park on PCH, I think, with having more parking, and currently, they're an issue because they don't leave when they're supposed to, they don't listen to the limits that have been imposed on caravan parking or parking of any kind. If the one-lane roundabout does get blocked for any reason, a breakdown, an accident, or anything, it could limit traffic in one direction or even both directions depending on the way people have to go. Initially, there was no speed limit change, as far as I understood, when I came to the first meeting for the roundabouts, there would be no speed limit change, so it would have been a 50 or a 55 through the one-lane section. But as of the last meeting, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I believe it would go from a 50 to a 40 to a 30 to a 25 or something like that, to reduce the speed through the one-lane section, which is fine, it's just I'd like to know what else has been changed and not disclosed, what other things have been remedied and not been told to us. I've lived around roundabouts all my life, and what I see a lot is that people will slow down because they have to, go around the roundabout, and then immediately accelerate to make up for the speed they've lost or to make up for the time they've lost to slow down. I think it would be the same situation happening here, even if it is a one-lane roundabout, but it's just something to consider that people drive dangerously, and they will continue to drive dangerously regardless of a roundabout before and after the roundabout has finished. That's my time, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you been attending the workshops?
No, I have been told about them, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have Paul? So Arthur, you donated time, correct? Okay, thank you.
I'm here to do something unpleasant. Your behavior at the last meeting was atrocious. I cannot tell you that sitting through a meeting where there's three of you talking at one time when only one of you is recognized is totally inappropriate, it's not useful, it's not a good way to run meetings, and it's really not a good look for the person who keeps interrupting everybody else. It's not good. Try not to do that anymore. Try to have an orderly meeting. The other thing I would like to say is, since roundabouts can be discussed in 2A, is I think it's an idea that deserves a try, and so please, give it a shot. Treat the people from Caltrans well. We don't want to repeat the reaction we got from District 29 after certain people gave them a hard time about replacing a tank in Bush Drive, and they went away for two years before they came back again, and that was, did not get done before the Woolsey fire. We need help, we need it now. Treat the people who are specialists and come here to testify in favor of doing something. Let them do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Merrill?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and service. My appeal is more of, we know all this is very complex. I've worked on highway safety stuff for 25, 30 years, and I persist, and I get done what I can get done. You all have a lot of knowledge and history up there about our community. I've gotten some feedback about what's gone on recently, and I would implore you all to try to make progress and not have the goal of perfection in mind here. We only have a certain amount of time, and I'm concerned, this may or may not be true, that if we don't get certain things done in a certain timeframe, we may lose certain funding. So, I mean, I've heard some big numbers, I don't think that does any of us any good, so I would implore you to make as much progress forward as we can. I've been to Europe, roundabouts I've seen work very effectively. If we put a roundabout in in a couple of different places and it doesn't work, we can always go back, but it's been highly effective in places I've seen. So, since Paul is Mr. Water Storage, anything we can do to improve water storage, approving ancillary tanks on people's properties, you know, during the rebuilds, others, and if we get the chance to approve any big tanks, I would strongly support anything, because since Woolsey, the only thing I know is we've enlarged some lines over by Encinal, but I don't think we've put in any new big storage tanks. And obviously, we ran out of water during Woolsey, we ran out of water in Malibu Palisades. Hopefully, the connectors go through, which are on the diagram, on the drawing board now, but let's make as much progress forward as we can, as fast as we can, because we've got a lot to do. Thank you to everybody who's been here a long time.
Thank you, Merrill. It's nice to see you. That, do we have anyone online?
There is one raised hand in the meeting, and I would also ask for the commission's patience a little bit tonight. We don't have Parker with us, he's on his honeymoon, so congratulations to him.
Congratulations, Parker.
But the two of us are figuring this out.
Okay.
Anne?
Hello, do you hear me?
Yep, we hear you fine.
Hello, hey, listen, I'm watching you guys with Timecode on the other version, which you can find on Nextdoor. So if you go on Nextdoor and you click on the agenda link for this meeting, I'm not a ghost, you have a picture, it looks like the carpet there. Hey, Paul, how you doing? So if you go there, you can watch the Timecode version, and there's live reactions, so you can react live and text and everything at the same time. So keep doing a great job, and just also want to remind everybody, I'm running for California Governor. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. All right, Tyler, do you have a director report?
Luckily for me, our community development director is here today.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Alonda, sorry.
Just a minute, we have some technical difficulties, but good to see everybody.
Nice to see you, too.
We're just gonna do it without a PowerPoint. Is that okay? Wanted to provide you with an update on our Palisade rebuilds. We have 175 applications that have come through the planning department, division, I'm sorry, 95 of them have been approved, so those are great news. As far as a portion that goes to the construction review of the building plan check, we have received 22 applications, and we have approved 11. We're also working with five more families to get approval this week and expecting to see another 10 families coming into building plan check. We invite every family to come and visit us to the rebuild center. Those that haven't made it, we are taking appointments, but we also are taking walk-ins. I'm there every Friday to help streamline, make decisions, anything that I can do to help the families move forward. As far as the Woolsey fire, happy to report that we continue giving certificate of occupancies to the families that are completing their homes. So far, we have issued 210 certificate of occupancies, and we have 97 homes still under construction. As of today, we have issued 364 permits. And then, lastly, just a few reminders and invite our community, we have several events coming up. November 13, we'll be hosting a design professionals meeting for fire rebuilds here at City Hall from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. There are also a Poliboo Recovery Expo that is going to be held at the Pacific Palisade Village from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. on November 16. And then, a family gathering for the Palisades rebuilds on November 18 from 11:00 to 1:00 here at the City Council Chambers. And finally, our events for December, a design professional meeting that will also happen here, the Council Chambers, from 3:00 to 4:00. And that's all the items that I have to report for this meeting.
Thank you. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Sir?
I move we accept the consent calendar.
I'll second that unless we need a roll call or anything.
Okay.
There is one item on the consent calendar that we will need to have a roll call vote because it does involve a resolution.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
So this is for item 3B1, the extension of CDP 12-095. Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamens?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to 4A. I'm sorry, so approval amendments is all taken care of?
Yeah, yes, that's by consensus.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to 4A. 4A is a CDP number 25-009. It's an application to install 19 new guardrails, 22 new or upgraded curb ramps, 6,956 linear feet of new sidewalks, three new retaining walls, two realigned intersections, and 42 new light poles, 15 miles of new upgraded bike lanes and vehicle pullouts for law enforcement use, median reconstruction in various locations, and associated roadway improvements along Pacific Coast Highway with the public right of way. And this is continued from October 20, 2025. Yeah, let's start off with disclosures.
I will disclose that...
There are no disclosures required for citywide project. Thank you.
There's, there are, because this is continued from last time, so just anything that might have changed from last time.
Okay, I spoke with some folks at Pepperdine and kind of further clarified some of their thoughts on the sidewalk in front of the grass between John Tyler and Malibu Canyon.
I attempted to read a couple hundred emails today. That's it.
I spoke with some folks at Pepperdine, and I also spoke with some folks at LA County Public Works and LA Transportation, and I spoke with Lee from Caltrans, and I think I spoke with Tyler and Skylar.
I did have conversation, two conversations today with Tyler, and besides that, no other disclosures since the last meeting.
I did speak to Pepperdine and several folks from the community, and that's my additional disclosures.
And then, for all the commissioners, just if you can do a voice comment that any of your disclosures will not change your vote or have any impact from last time.
They will not.
Nope.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, we'll go to the presentation?
Yeah. Real quick, Chair, if I may, before we, before Adam, before you begin, just want to bring the commission to where we came from. So last meeting, the planning commission asked Caltrans to address a few items. They have tried to address as much as they can, and they're going to be presenting that tonight, Adam's going to touch on that tonight. Just want to remind the commission that they have a December 1 deadline to meet their funding requirements to obtain a CDP. Not saying we have to approve or deny, but, you know, if we can make a decision tonight, that's, that's what they're looking for.
Okay.
Go ahead, Adam, thanks.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. Okay. Good evening, everybody. As noted, project tonight is coastal development permit number 25-009. Next slide, please. So just quick project background, just going to hit the high levels on the presentation, not going to go through the whole thing again, but Caltrans also has a follow-up presentation, they'll get into some more details on some of those follow-ups that Tyler mentioned. So the project was submitted on March 13, 2025. Caltrans presented the project to the City Council on June 23, 2025. The project was presented to the Public Works Committee on July 23, 2025, and the project was presented to Planning Commission on October 20 and was continued to tonight. Next slide, please. So just a reminder on the project boundaries here, the Ventura County line on the left and Serra Road on the right, roughly 15 miles of PCH. Next slide, please. So just a few updates since the last meeting on some of the scope of work. So the number of light poles has been reduced to 27 new light poles and 10 miles of new or upgraded bike lanes, and median reconstruction will now happen at only three locations. Next slide, please. And again, the associated roadway improvements that are being proposed, this hasn't changed, but repaving, crosswalk striping, new signals, new left turn, lengthened left turn pockets, new radar feedback signs, traffic signal timing, and new traffic signs. Next slide, please. So again, this project is exempt from CEQA per sections 15301A and E as well as 15303D. Next slide, please. So since the October 20 planning commission meeting, the city has received approximately 71 letters, that includes correspondence from Pepperdine University and Malibu Country Homeowners Estates. Of the 71 letters, the vast majority have spoken in favor of the project. Next slide, please. And in reference to some of the requests for information and updates from the commission on, from last meeting, Caltrans has provided updated sheets on the roadway signs, updated sheets on the sidewalk, proposed sidewalk along Peral Canyon Beach, and updated lighting plan sheets, and correspondence from the California Coastal Commission on the continuous bikeway inquiry that the commission had. Next slide, please. And one thing, staff would like to propose a condition of approval to add to the resolution relative to lighting and the dark sky ordinance. Staff proposes for your consideration stating Caltrans shall utilize light fixtures that are dark sky compliant to the maximum extent feasible. The light fixtures shall be fully shielded, 3,000 Kelvin in color temperature, directed downward, and must not exceed the light trespass limits on adjacent properties listed in MMC Section 1741050G unless necessary for adequate ingress/egress as reasonably determined by the community development director. And city staff shall inspect the installed lights at the cost of Caltrans and confirm compliance with this condition. So that ends my presentation, and as stated, Caltrans has a follow-up presentation detailing some more of those follow-ups. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have the applicant team, we have Nancy, Lee, and Mustaf.
Good evening, Commissioners and everyone. Thank you for having me back to provide some update tonight.
Okay, stop their time until we get the presentation up.
Okay. So just a few updates as Adam has provided. So the plan sheet modification that was asked last time, we will be able to comply with that and provide a new sign as requested. The other item is about the sidewalk from Malibu Canyon to John Tyler, this is in front of Pepperdine University. The third item is eliminating parking and provide continuous Um, the third item is eliminating parking and provide continuous class two bike lane, and the third one is the cross-section, uh, detail for the Corral Canyon to, um, Malibu Seafood area, the, the sidewalk and the street lighting. So for the sign, this is the sign that will be replaced and will be installed as requested. As far as the Corral Canyon, I mean, Corral sidewalk, this is the stretch and this is the cross-section that we have developed. There will be enough space for the parking. Uh, we will have, for one of the cross-section we're showing up there where we have no parking allow, it will be about twelve foot to about twelve and a half foot that we have for parking and then six-foot sidewalk. And the other section shown where, uh, parking is limited or allowed at certain time, the, the space that we have is about nine point five feet to about fourteen feet, so it vary, um, in that section. So, and the bike lane, we have modified a little due to the median work that we're not going to reduce anymore. We have updated that for the northbound is about three point five mile and the southbound is five point six. The reason we are not able to provide continuous class two bike lane is because at the intersection, you will, um, especially we have no left turn or right turn lane, we don't have enough space to provide any bike in that location. And then wherever we have parking, we will not be able to eliminate parking and provide continuous bike through there. Uh, we did reach out to Coastal Commission about eliminating parking. They do have, we have to go through a very lengthy process in order to eliminate parking because we will not be able to, uh, provide a replacement parking which is required when we eliminate parking along, um, P C H. So that is one reason why we are not be able to provide continuous class two bike. And the other thing, I think we have checked the Malibu, uh, use of, um, land use is also inconsistent with the Malibu land use. It require parking, also providing access to the public along the coastal. As far as lighting, we did went back and have our engineer reevaluated. So we, we did reduce, as you see on the table, uh, one location that we have reduced drastically, I think is at Ramirez. It was proposed before ten and now it's two. And then the other location, Heather Cliff, I believe it was one, we actually increased to three, and the following slide will show you the existing and the proposed light. This is just the graphic of the location that's on the table. So this is at John Tyler. Um, if you see, the intersection does have lighting. We currently have existing four lighting at the intersection, and we're proposing two new lighting with the blue, uh, light, those are the proposed on the screen. At Malibu Seafood, the blue is the proposed lighting. We are proposing four. Uh, currently, it does not have any lighting there. This is at Ramirez Mesa, existing, we have two, which is close by the, the intersection is seven, uh, Ramirez itself and the other place across the street, and we are proposing two additional lighting at this location. This is at Zuma View and Summeris. Currently, we have seven mainly at the intersection, just at the Summeris, we have, just at that intersection itself, six existing lighting. But in between the two intersection, you don't have anything, so we're proposing eight more in this location, as you could see, uh, shown in the blue, um, light. And this is at, uh, Cavalery. We have existing one, and we're proposing three more, uh, shown there mainly at the And Heather Cliff, at the intersection, you don't have any lighting, so we're proposing three more right there. You seem to have it on the side street. This is at Boncel and Butch. Existing is four at the intersection, and we're proposing five more in between the two intersection itself. And as I say, uh, the lighting are needed to enhance safety and to reduce collision at night. We have evaluated, and we believe these lighting are really needed for nighttime and, and to, um, prevent dark, uh, accident and improve the safety for the motorists and for the pedestrian. So, thank you.
Lee? Do you want, okay, you wanna, so you wanna save your time for rebuttal? All right, um, we're gonna move on to public comment. Pat Healy, you're first. Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm gonna call a few names. Next is Justin Ornstein, then Scott Dietrich, my, uh, Michelle Shane, Paul Crozanti. So if you guys could be ready.
Good evening, Commissioners. If you're going to approve this plan, Slow Growth has the following comments. We prefer no streetlights in Western Malibu, but can support putting tran- Caltrans proposed streetlights at intersections, but not elsewhere on the highway. There are many other causes of collisions other than the lack of lighting, such as speeding, drunk driving, texting, et cetera. Caltrans failed to prove lack of lighting was the actual cause of the accidents and failed to show how lighting of any of these locations would prevent future collisions. Besides, streetlights violate the general plan and are prohibited in Escha. Beaches and streams are Escha and are to remain dark. Zuma Beach doesn't have streetlights. Besides not being needed for safety, an additional reason for not putting streetlights across from Malibu Seafood is they are proposed along a beach which is Escha. If any streetlights are proposed at a stream that is actually proven necessary for safety, they should be placed as far away from the Escha as possible with no light trespass. To be a dark sky compliant, three thousand Kelvin is not enough. The lights must be fully shielded and facing downward. Lighting of the highway itself only should be allowed. There should be no light trespass off the highway, including light glow. Most of the accidents occur in Eastern Malibu where P C H streetlights are abundant, and the east end of Malibu has many more, has, and the, and the east end of Malibu has many more accidents than the dark west of Malibu. If the commission votes for non-contiguous bike lanes, there are ways to make them more protective. Rumble strips is one of the ways. We support Pepperdine and their opposition to sidewalks along their campus. We don't understand the purpose of putting six-foot wide sidewalks along Dan Blocker Beach. Zuma Beach doesn't have sidewalk, so why are they needed there? Sidewalks promote the urbanization of this area in Western Malibu. Also, where people park now varies in width, and we're concerned that sidewalks will result in the less of each parking. We have a concern that a study indicates that the narrowing of car lanes from twelve feet in width to eleven feet creates a safety hazard. If bike lanes and sidewalks result in the narrowing of lanes, it's not making P C H safer, and this should be taken into account in making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is Justin Ornstein, and I'm the Transportation Deputy for L A County Supervisor Lindsay Horvath. I'm here this evening once again to convey the supervisor's unwavering support for this project and safety improvements up and down P C H. I would like to extend a big thank you to Director Roberts, Lee Haber, Nancy Pei, and all of the Caltrans staff who have been working day in and day out to make P C H a safer experience for Malibu residents, and to the many Malibu stakeholders who have been advocating tirelessly for a safer P C H. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Data and multiple studies conducted by Caltrans, the C H P, the Sheriff's Department, and the City of Malibu have documented the unsafe conditions of P C H. In fact, each of the improvements being considered this evening is a recommendation that came from a January twenty twenty-four road safety audit, um, that came in direct response to the tragic deaths of four Pepperdine students just over two years ago. Since two thousand and ten, we've seen sixty-two fatalities and more than a hundred serious injuries along this twenty-one mile stretch of P C H, and each time, we hear condolences, messages of heavy hearts, thoughts and prayers. You have an opportunity this evening to help prevent tragedies like this from happening again. In fact, one of the proposed sidewalks between John Tyler and Malibu Canyon will offer safe access for children, families, and students to and from Malibu Bluffs Park. I would be remiss if I didn't address this sidewalk in more detail. The university has raised two primary concerns with the sidewalk: emergency vehicle access and sidewalk connectivity. With regard to emergency vehicle access, the Caltrans design ensures that there would be no encroachment on established helicopter zones or reservoir access. Second, the current design includes a six-inch curb on the P C H side, which would not impede first responder routes, and mountable curb options are available. Lastly, sidewalk construction would be phased to maintain emergency access at all times. With regard to connectivity, Pepperdine's recent letter dated November third insinuates that the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department is opposed to the sidewalk because it is discontinuous. This is not the understanding of our office. L A S D has been an incredible partner in advocating for pedestrian safety, and like Supervisor Horvath would prefer to see safe contiguous sidewalks throughout Malibu. But shovels have to go in the ground in order to make that a reality, and it can and should start here. Our office, for one, believes that a sidewalk at this location is safer than no sidewalk at all. More than twelve hundred comments were made during the public comment period on Caltrans's P C H master plan. There was, of course, a preference for improvements that support cycling, pedestrian access, and transit infrastructure, but that wasn't the highlight for us. What was most telling is, is that the least favored option was keeping the road in its current condition. Please listen to the Malibu residents and visitors who have already weighed in. These improvements will save lives, and I respectfully, I respectfully urge the commission-
Thank you.
-to grant the C D P.
Thank you, Chair Leonard and Commissioners. What do we want Malibu to be? They're trying to couch this in terms of safety. They're adding tons and tons of concrete. I wish you guys would have gotten the report from the Public Works Commission. We raised many objections, specifically to that stupid sidewalk they're trying to push that nobody's gonna use. Think about this. Most people, when they come into Malibu from the canyon or up the coast, what do they see? They see grass coming down to the highway. It sets the tone for rural Malibu. It sets the tone that follows our vision statement. How many, I, I wanna ask you guys a question. How many of you, before they started pushing this project for Western Malibu, had people demanding a sidewalk at Pepperdine? I don't think so. There's a lot wrong with this proposal. There's some right with it. We need a few sidewalks, and Michelle Shane, I think, will talk about them, and we need some bike lanes. I hate the fact that they're discontinuous, but we should have class four bike lanes, and we can do that without putting more concrete in, and that makes the bike safer. If you've got plastic poles up along the edge of the bike lane, emergency vehicles could run through those if they had to, but it separates maybe a ten-ton truck from a twenty-pound carbon and aluminum bicyclist and might provide real safety. So, yeah, put in a class four bike lane, not a class two. Painting doesn't do much. What else? There's no mention in their report of Malibu's vision statement, and that's really what's at issue here. We don't need a lot more lights, and we've got to keep this rural every time that they're gonna propose something. Oh, yeah, it's in the interest of safety. Is it really making anything safety, I, safer? I think our problem is you've got guys going a hundred miles an hour. We're just about to launch our speed cameras. None of this is gonna stop somebody going, that desires to go a hundred. It doesn't affect those four Pepperdine girls. That was Eastern Malibu.
Thank you, Scott. I have a question for you. One second, please. Scott, will you stay up at the podium, please?
Yes, sir.
Are you speaking as, uh, a private citizen or are you-
I am speaking as a private citizen.
You, you made it seem like you were speaking the recommendation of the Public Safety Commission. I, I wanted to get that clear for the record.
But to be clear, the Public Works Commission, Public Works Commission-
Okay.
-of which I'm vice chair, had many objections to this proposal that were not, unfortunately, passed on to you guys, 'cause we debated a lot of that. I don't know how we fix this. I'm going to bring it up to council, get their advice, but that's what it is.
Do you wanna say something?
Yes, I just wanna make clear, every commissioner has the right as a private citizen to make comments, but unless they're authorized by a vote to speak on behalf-
That's what I was concerned-
And, and your comments are valid and, and taken, but we just wanna make clear to everyone here that you're speaking as an individual, not as the body.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
My question for the last fifteen years has been, why not once has any commission ever come to us with any comments after studying something we're doing? Is there a city policy that disallows that?
Not that I know of.
It's never, ever happened, and I know commissions have asked to do it.
You would have to talk to council about that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I wanna speak about the, uh, proposed corner of Malibu Canyon Road and Pacific Coast Highway. The, um, metrics of that intersection were confirmed by Caltrans in nineteen ninety-one in response to a letter that I wrote to them with a diagram requesting that two left turn lanes, um, be allowed from Malibu Canyon Road onto Pacific Coast Highway. And you'd be amazed by the response from that letter. It's like, huh, what? We don't need that. Well, that was Peter Su. He was, uh, very high in command at Caltrans, and I don't even know if he was that familiar with the intersection. But for the right turns, which existed at the time and exist today, what would be described as the number two lane to, um, the right side of the number one lane, all the way to the, the grass at Pepperdine, is now a very large area suitable for large trucks to turn right from Malibu Canyon Road onto Pacific Coast Highway, which is what they need to do for deliveries because the trucks are banned from Kane and Doom Road. They can do this maneuver without, uh, incursion much into the, the number one, which is the fast lane of vehicles approaching from the east, and they could do this right turn on red, and currently, it's been fine. There's really haven't been crashes there. But the proposal before you, uh, doesn't see the wisdom in this and wants to push out the curbs and, or push out the corner and create curbs and, well, gutter and what would likely be parking in front of Pepperdine, which is the Red Herring. Reverse angle parking in front of Pepperdine for the bicyclists to park their vehicles all day as they ride? Well, that gets them out of Bluffs Park, where the city has objected to their taking up the parking in the Bluffs Park from the uses that need to occur in Bluffs Park, such as the soccer and baseball events. So, going back to what's the problem? There really isn't a problem for a sidewalk needed to be in front of Pepperdine. It kinda got thrown into this big, beautiful plan. It's not all that great of a plan. Maybe it doesn't need to be so big, and I would like the applicant to see the wisdom of plucking a few of these unnecessary items from their plan so that it preserves the integrity of the reason we're here, which is the pavement project, is what's to go on the pavement- is the pavement project, is what's to go on the pavement? What type of a paint job particularly? And some of the other things, yeah, they can get around to fixing, but it's not about in-full street lighting between Pepperdine and Ventura County line. That's not of issue. Those poles will remain and can be added later.
Thank you, Ryan.
And should not jeopardize this project. Thank you.
All right, Paul?
I'm Michelle Mansford, three-pointed. Anyway, boring history. When I got here in '78, there was a lot of traffic on weekends, but I rode bicycles the rest of the time, and I rode back and forth to Santa Monica, and I never got hit, thank God. But somewhere around the late '80s, I became aware of the fact that my time was running out. And so bike lanes are a really good idea, and we don't -- and then later on, when I was on the city council and we had the tragedy with the four girls from Pepperdine, I had a lot of hours sitting where you're sitting right now and listening to tragedy and death, and we have to try and fix it. Well, Caltrans has responded, and they're trying to fix it, and I want you to take them seriously, and I want you to let them try it. And if something turns out to be not so good, let's tell them to change it afterwards. But right now, you got to do it. It really needs to get done. I don't think I'm ever going to get back on a bicycle on Pacific Coast Highway, but it really is a shame that it's as deadly as it is right now. And if we put in bike lanes, I believe the bicyclists are actually required to use them at those locations where there are bicycle lanes, and that is something that would be very, very helpful. I know that it's very frustrating when you ride along and a huge peloton is taking up one and thinking about taking another lane on PCH. That is not getting along well. So take them seriously, conduct yourselves with decorum, and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council or commission. Well, this has become an immediate top priority for both the city and Caltrans. The ongoing delays and lack of coordination are just putting lives at risk, and we've already seen the tragic consequences of the inaction on PCH for far too many years and far too many times when there's been an opportunity to correct that. We're not talking about abstract traffic studies or long-term proposals. This is about preventing the next fatality. PCH is the only major corridor and serves residents, students, families, first responders daily, and then, not to mention, all the folks that come in just to see Malibu from around the world. It's unconscionable that we're still waiting for meaningful safety infrastructure, speed control, and enforcement after all of the loss. As you can see, there's a lot of the students here that are here to also speak, and you have so many from the community. After all the loss that this community has endured, we're just wondering, what's the holdup? How many more memorials do we have to have? Do we have to endure and gather before something meaningful actually happens and change occurs? It's time for leadership, and Caltrans is here to offer a solution. It may not be perfect in your eyes, but it's a solution, and it needs to be a start. You have only so many days to confirm this. It's really time to stop passing the responsibility back and forth and quibbling over, you know, really the way most of us see it, minor issues. Let's finalize a real and comprehensive plan for safety on PCH. And I just want to thank everyone here for your advocacy and sensitivity, but compassion for the lives of Malibu needs to be our focus, and I truly hope it's yours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, this is an empty chair. It represents my daughter Emily, who was killed 15 years ago. It represents the four Pepperdine students, and if we fail tonight, it represents every victim we could have saved. You read my articles, the proposal I've submitted. I think you know what's at stake. In 10 days, this $55 million disappears forever, not delayed, not postponed, gone. Let's be honest: Caltrans has done a terrible job explaining this project. They have presented basic painted bike lanes when protected lanes are possible. They failed to clearly address community concerns about lighting, sidewalks, and rural character. They created confusion when they should have provided clarity. The solutions exist: protected bike lanes, limited lighting, rural character preservation. It's all achievable within this project. Caltrans just failed to present the options properly. This is precisely why we need to approve this project with conditions, forcing them to do better. Because here's the brutal choice: approve an imperfect project that we can improve or reject it and guarantee that more families will face empty chairs like this one. The funding pays for both rebuilding and safety improvement. Reject this project, and we get neither. The road stays exactly as deadly as it is today. Caltrans wants to avoid public embarrassment. They'll work with us if we clearly outline our expectations. I've lived with this empty chair for 15 years, every holiday, every birthday, every family dinner. Perfect is the enemy of life-saving for too long. Approve this project, force Caltrans to do better. Let's work together to make it better. Because in 10 days, when the funding vanishes, each of you will have to look at the next grieving family in the eye and explain why you chose bureaucratic perfection over child's life. The blood will be on your hands and Caltrans' hands. You will be the reason there's another empty chair at another family's table. I've lived with this empty chair for 15 years. I'm begging you not to create more. As is often said in the film business, negotiation starts after the contract is signed. Don't create more empty chairs. Vote yes with conditions. Let's make this the first step in finally making PCH safe. In my 15 years of fighting for safer PCH, this is the first time real funds have been allocated to road safety.
Thank you for your commitment. Afterwards, we'll do Brooke Doherty and then Joe Drummond. David Cranston?
Can I start?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm David Ralston. My daughter Neve Ralston was killed on October 17th, 2023, on Pacific Coast Highway, along with her sorority sisters Peyton Stewart, Asha Weir, and Deslon Williams. I watched a substantial portion of the previous meeting where the project was discussed, so I have a layman's understanding of the issues. But I can appreciate that there are many complications that would accompany any project to modify PCH. I understand that for the residents of Malibu, it is unrealistic to expect consensus. From my understanding, this is an opportunity for the funding of maintenance work that is needed for the road itself, and for that reason alone, it makes sense to obtain that funding while you can. I trust the analysis that has been done by Michelle Shane, who has made improving the safety of PCH a personal mission of his for 15 years now. I urge you to do the same. Approve this project and improve it as necessary. In regards to the elements that involve Pepperdine, in particular, the sidewalk, I believe that Pepperdine wants to ensure that emergency vehicles will continue to be able to facilitate airlifting of critically injured people from their lawn, and they also want to understand how a sidewalk along their property will fit into a larger sidewalk project. They are not against the project on principle, but it needs to make sense. When you consider any projected change to PCH, in my opinion, the first question should be, will this make PCH safer? If the intention of that modification is that it was designed to make it safer, even if that does not seem to be intuitively obvious, then in the interest of safety, the modification should supersede any other point of contention, because change is required. Please do not let perfection be the enemy of good. Approve this project, make it better.
Thank you.
Hi there, good evening. My name is Brooke Doherty, and I'm a junior at Pepperdine University, and tonight I would like to share a letter we received from a Malibu first responder. For the last several years, I have had the pleasure of serving the city of Malibu. However, I have had the unfortunate duty of responding to dozens of traffic fatalities along PCH, including the one that took the lives of our four Pepperdine students. That night, and many others, continue to haunt me every single day, and I am not alone. Each life that is lost lives in the minds of every firefighter, sheriff, deputy, and EMT forever. They are scars that reshape our lives, our relationships, and our mental health. I sign up for that burden, so none of you have to experience it firsthand, over and over again. I choose to carry that trauma with me because I love this community, but I am tired. I am tired of watching the corner take people off our highway. I am tired of telling friends and families that their loved ones are gone. I am tired of going home, knowing that we failed our community, and I am disheartened that this persisting problem still exists. While each and every incident has its own set of circumstances, one message is clear in my mind: PCH is not safe. In my years of service, I have heard the cries for help to step up and protect our community, and I have heard the promises made by the city and our state to take action, but I have yet to see any meaningful change. Today, you have the opportunity to make good on those promises. It is no secret that once this funding is gone, it will be years before we ever see it again. And as each year passes, more lives will be lost, and we will relive the same tragic story again and again. I understand that this plan may not be perfect, and I understand that some believe additional street lighting would change the rural landscape of Malibu. But for those of you, I wonder, would you feel the same way if you lost your child, your parent, or your best friend? I guarantee that each and every one of us in this room has nearly hit a pedestrian on PCH simply because we couldn't see them. It is no wonder why so many homeless die on our highway. Would you trade that risk for a sidewalk that you may feel is unnecessary? It is easy to find reasons to be dissatisfied with a plan of this magnitude, but things become abundantly clear when you are standing over someone's loved one deceased on PCH. Each of you signed up to represent and protect our community, just as I signed up to serve it. Please make the decision today to take a major step in making our highway safer. Our residents depend on you, our college students depend on you, and our first responders depend on you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joe, who's donating time for you? I don't have a card for
Oh, Jan Ravlett? Oh, no, sorry, Beat.
Beat, okay.
Yeah, what am I saying? You got it?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing this tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of Malibu Township Council to urge you to approve this item, but with key safety and design conditions requested by the community: reduced and targeted street lighting that complies with Malibu's dark sky ordinance, which they already do comply, so that's good; only at intersections and not in areas such as the proposed lights between Zimara's and Zuma View Place; and just one right by the entry of Malibu Seafood; and none on the Escha Beachside; and rural appropriate sidewalks limited to areas that truly improve safety, such as near Heather Cliff; and clear direction that any lane narrowing must be paired with future protected bike lanes as part of a complete streets approach or the future PCH usability study project. It's important to move this project forward now. As Michelle Shane and others have pointed out, if the city delays, Caltrans may real allocate the funding to another project outside Malibu. But moving forward should not mean compromising Malibu's safety standards or rural coastal character. This is our chance to start transforming PCH into what it actually is: a community corridor, not just a state-high-speed state highway. Right now, Caltrans still classifies PCH as a principal arterial highway under the federal functional classification system, a designation meant for high-speed regional travel. But here in Malibu, PCH is a community corridor, not a freight route. It carries residents, beachgoers, cyclists, and families, not trucks and interstate traffic. In fact, Malibu Township Council had prohibited -- got the city to prohibit three axle and larger trucks from using PCH within city limits. That alone shows that this road is not functioning as a highway. Yet, because of its outdated classification, PCH is still subject to Caltrans' high-speed highway design standards: 12-foot lanes, limited pedestrian crossings, and 50- to 55-mph design speeds. Those standards make it harder to add the protections our community needs: protected bike lanes, safe crossings, and narrower, calmer lanes. If we can demonstrate through this project that 10- to 10-1/2-foot lanes work safely for Malibu's mix of users, it gives the city a solid foundation to petition Caltrans to reclassify PCH as a minor arterial or urban coastal roadway, essentially a Main Street corridor, or even better, Pacific Coast Boulevard. That classification matters. It would legally justify lowering posted speed limits, protected bikeways, and sensitive design standards that emphasize safety over speed, such as safer crossings like at Heather Cliff. And we won't need so many huge warning signs. This would align with Caltrans' own complete streets policies, which encourages reclassification when a state route functions as a community street. It would also make Malibu eligible for Highway Safety Improvement Program and Safe Streets for All funding to build these improvements. We all know why this matters. According to UC Berkeley's Traffic Injury Mapping System, 61 people have been killed on Malibu's stretch of PCH since 2010. More than half of them have been pedestrians and cyclists. That's not a statistic, it's a heartbreak we've lived through as a community. The loss of the four Pepperdine students two years ago, young women standing on the corner of the road doing nothing wrong, broke this city's heart. It reminded us, in a painful way, that speed and design decisions here are literally life and death choices. By approving this project with these specific conditions: reduced and shielded lighting, rural environmentally sensitive sidewalks, and commitment to future protected bike lanes that separate people from high-speed traffic, you can both protect Malibu's character and lay the groundwork for long-term safety. Once the narrow lanes are in place, the city can ask Caltrans for a new engineering and traffic study to formally justify lowering the posted speed limit. That's how we begin transforming PCH from a dangerous highway into a safe, livable, and sustainable community corridor, at least a big chunk of it. Let's make sure what happened to those Pepperdine girls and to so many others, including Emily Shane, never happens again. So please approve this project with the community's requested conditions and make this the first step toward reclassifying PCH for what it truly is: the lifeline of Malibu, not the highway that divides it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dave Cranston. I'm a longtime resident of the City of Malibu. I'm here to urge you to please do not pass up the Caltrans offer to make PCH safer for everyone. As we know, there have been far too many injuries and deaths on PCH, which may be the most dangerous stretch of roadway in the state, if not the country. This is especially true for pedestrians and cyclists who have been injured and killed at a rate that exceeds that of LA tenfold on a per capita basis. It's incomprehensible how we continue to tolerate that. I am a longtime cyclist who has ridden PCH through Malibu hundreds of times, probably more than anyone here, and I can speak to the safety of the proposed Class 2 bike lanes based upon my own personal experience as well as common sense. The proposed Class 2 bike lanes will provide a dramatic improvement to the safety of the thousands of cyclists who ride on PCH every weekend and every week. I understand that a protected lane may even be safer, but they have their own safety issues and problems. But more importantly, it will be years, if ever, before any protected lanes are designed, built, approved, funded, and installed. And they too will be opposed by some in the community. In the meantime, the proposed Class 2 lanes could save lives and injuries. Don't let what's some possible safer solution in the uncertain future be the enemy of what could save lives today. If we really want protected bike lanes, the Class 2 lanes are just paint. There's nothing preventing Caltrans and the city from There's nothing preventing Caltrans and the city from putting in protected lanes in the future. But right now, class lanes will provide a much safer place for cyclists to ride. Now, we now, we either ride on the shoulder or we ride on the traffic lanes. The shoulder is frequently unavailable due to parked cars, and even if not fully occupied by parked cars, it is inherently dangerous to swerve in between the parked cars and back into the traffic lanes. And while riding on the shoulder or close to around cars, motorists who are coming in from the side streets have a very difficult time seeing the oncoming cyclist. And shoulders have lots of hazards. There are lots of road debris, lots of potholes, and rocks. And I almost lost my life a few years ago when I hit an unseen hazard, causing me to careen into the lanes just beyond Trancas uncontrollably and see my life pass before my eyes before I was able to recover and get back to safety. Class II bike lanes avoids these risks. And it will also give us additional space to avoid being doored. You all know what doored is? By parked cars without having to enter the traffic lanes. As you can imagine, riding the traffic lanes, if you have to, because they're occupied by the, is even more dangerous.
Thank you very much.
Please approve the Caltrans proposal. If you do, you will save lives.
All right, Ann Jones?
So, good evening. Thank you for listening to me. I feel like I'm going to be expressing a, maybe a less popular opinion. I've lived on Point Doom for 36 years, and in that time, I've never felt, driving back and forth from my house into town into Malibu at 10 o'clock at night, at 4 o'clock in the morning, I've never felt that I couldn't see because of lack of streetlights. And so I guess my first ask is that they not be installed. I see that many, there were 42 that were proposed, now there are 27 new light poles proposed. Those all seem to be very close to where I live, on Zuma Res Drive. It's going to damage the night sky for us, it's going to make our life different. I understand safety, but I did want to express this opinion. I don't think I'm the only one who feels this way. That's my first ask, and I'm going to make this short. My second ask is that for the existing streetlights that Caltrans already has here, that they be downshaded all around to comply with dark skies, and they also be relamped to comply with dark skies Kelvin ratings. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jan Ravlich. And I'm here to oppose the installation of the numerous streetlights in western Malibu. Western Malibu is one of the few places left in Los Angeles County where you can still see the stars and experience true darkness at night. That would bring light pollution, harm wildlife, and erase the rural natural feeling that defines our community. Please protect the character of western Malibu and keep our skies dark. That darkness is a part what makes Malibu beautiful and different. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nicole Taylor, and I'm Pepperdine University's Senior Vice President and Chief Operating Officer. I also serve as the Vice Chair for the Emergency Operations Community for the university. Thank you for your work tonight to enhance PCH safety. Pepperdine fully supports this commitment and appreciates the broader project before you and the ongoing coordination among Caltrans, the city, and our public safety partners. To be clear, we do not want to jeopardize the larger project or its funding, and are proposing alternative ways to address our concerns without disturbing a path for approval of the larger project. As you saw in the letter we shared last week, our concern is narrow and specific. The proposed new sidewalk on the northbound side of PCH in front of Alumni Park between Malibu Canyon Road and John Tyler Drive with no connected sidewalk to the east or west. Despite several months of meetings with Caltrans, we unfortunately have not seen information showing the need for this isolated segment, how it will enhance safety, or how it proposes to mitigate the risks it may create for pedestrian safety or emergency response efforts. The sidewalk would not connect to existing or proposed sidewalks to the east or west along PCH. And based on feedback from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, we are further concerned it could induce more people to walk onto PCH, which would reduce rather than improve safety. When a pedestrian goes onto this sidewalk, they will be left with no alternatives when it ends, except to go onto Pepperdine, continue their progress along PCH on an unprotected shoulder, or cross PCH. The sidewalk may introduce pedestrians onto a stretch of PCH they have not otherwise considered walking on. Alumni Park is also an emergency operations hub for our campus community and the broader region. It is a staging and access area for wildfire response. It supports medical and fire suppression helicopter operations, and it provides first responder access to our campus. Any new infrastructure that has the potential to restrict access or concentrate pedestrians in the area risks interfering with those functions. We have repeatedly asked Caltrans for analysis showing this will not happen, but we have not received it. Our request to Caltrans is simple: move ahead with the overall project now, but remove this one sidewalk element from the scope so we can all come back together with an appropriately designed continuous sidewalk and the associated safety analysis to support it. If Caltrans does not do this, we respectfully ask the Commission to condition the sidewalk to address our following safety concerns: connectivity, phasing construction of the sidewalk segments in front of campus to a point where there is a plan to build continuous operational sidewalks to logistical endpoints, and, before the installation, ensuring emergency services can continue unimpeded.
Can you please stay at the meeting in case we have further questions from you?
Yes, glad to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Una Khan. I'm one of the board members at Malibu Country Estates Homeowners Association, but I didn't get permission from all of them to talk, so I think I'm just going to have to speak as a resident. I have spoken to several of my fellow homeowners in Malibu Country Estates, and when I spoke to them about this sidewalk, they just shook their head, and they said, "We would never use it." Most of you know that Malibu Country Estates has 107 homes. We have very wide streets, we have very roomy sidewalks, and we use the area to walk our dogs and meet our neighbors, et cetera. I don't think I've ever seen anybody walk along the Pepperdine lawn who is a homeowner. When we go to Bluffs Park, somebody said that it was to allow us to have access to Bluffs Park. Most of us use our cars to get to Bluffs Park, for example, when there was voting in 2020. And it's never been an issue in terms of parking, et cetera. So I don't think any of, well, very few of the homeowners in Malibu Country Estates would support a sidewalk along Pepperdine. The other thing, as far as connectivity is concerned, I actually called it the sidewalk to nowhere because I thought, what a silly thing to do, that you'd have just a sidewalk starting at John Tyler and ending at Malibu Canyon. So I think that there's a lot of things that you do need to do to make PCH safer, and this is not one of them. So I would respectfully request that you not put taxpayer money into this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bridgette Thompson. I'm a Pepperdine University alum and a dedicated advocate for safety on PCH. Two years ago, my four best friends, Neve Rolsten, Peyton Stort, Asha Weir, and Deslon Williams, were killed on Pacific Coast Highway. They weren't just my friends, they were my roommates, they were my family, my entire world. Losing them shattered me in ways I can barely describe. There are days I still catch myself reaching for my phone to text them, or imagining what it would be like if they were still here, laughing in our kitchen, planning our futures, just living. Every time I drive past the spot where they died, it takes my breath away. I feel it in my chest, the silence, the absence, the memory of who they were and everything they were supposed to become. Pacific Coast Highway isn't just another line on a map, it's a scar, a place that reminds me every single day how quickly everything can be taken, and how fragile safety really is on Pacific Coast Highway. That's why tonight matters so much. This isn't just a planning item or another project, it's a $55 million chance to save lives. If we delay or say no, that money disappears, and the road will still be rebuilt but without the lighting, the sidewalks, the crossings, the things that actually make it safer. That means spending $55 million to rebuild the same deadly road that killed my best friends. 80% of this project is already repaving. The road will be open, torn apart, and ready. Adding safety now costs almost nothing extra, but waiting could cost everything. Now, I know some people really worry this will change the look of Malibu, but safety and beauty can coexist. Caltrans has already met dark sky standards. The sidewalks will still reflect our community's rural feel. We could protect the landscape and the people who live here. I've stood beside grieving families, the grieving families of my four best friends. I've watched the flowers wilt at their memorials. I've carried their absence through every day since that night. And I don't want anyone else to ever feel what that pain feels like. There is no Plan B, no next year, no second chance. If we turn this down, the money goes somewhere else, and nothing changes. Please don't let this chance slip away. Do it for Neve, do it for Peyton, do it for Asha, and do it for Deslon. Do it for their families. Do it so no one else has to live with this kind of pain. You have the power to save lives tonight. Please use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, everyone. If we could please refrain from applause. If you'd like to acknowledge something, just raise your hands. We don't want to intimidate anyone from being able to speak freely. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Damian Kevitt. I am also a survivor of traffic violence. In February of 2013, I was hit, pinned underneath a car, dragged nearly a quarter of a mile from the streets, onto and down the five freeway freeway speeds. My right leg was ripped off, about 20 pounds of flesh in two minutes, 20 broken bones, you name it. So I speak on this subject kind of passionately. I'm also the Executive Director of Streets Are For Everyone, known as SAFE. Since about two to three days after the four Pepperdine girls were hit and killed, SAFE has been working with the Malibu community members, with Fix PCH, with Senator Allen, the California Office of Traffic Safety, Caltrans, the city of Malibu's Supervisor Horvath's Office, and the LA County Sheriff's Department to increase enforcement, to get legislation passed, and we're very proud of the three bills we did get passed, and reengineer PCH to make it safer. Since the 20 October meeting, as of 6:00 PM tonight, SAFE has been personally copied on 322 emails, including 82 from Pepperdine students, who have all been sent to your email address, and 100% of them expressed support of this plan. The community has spoken. They want this to move forward. Now, we all know that PCH is a dangerous stretch of road, and I understand wanting to address concerns. The treatments that are here are on, as part of this plan, are usual treatments. They are proven to save lives. These are not experimental treatments. They will make PCH safer, including correctly implementing dark sky compliant lighting. And admittedly, SAFE would like to see more aggressive treatments, including things like Class IV bike lanes. But we realize that right now, there is a balance between safety and time and money available to get this done. I think we can all agree, this is not a perfect plan. But it is the first time that Malibu has had an opportunity to really redesign PCH for safety. And for the difference of everyone who uses it, not just those who drive PCH, but the cyclists as well. Please, let's stop this cycle of serious injuries and deaths. Let's move this project forward. Let's continue to work with Caltrans to build a better PCH through Malibu. Please support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public speakers? Are you online?
There's one raised hand. Ann?
That's it? Wow. Okay. Ann, you there?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm watching it online, but I got to get to a quiet place, sorry. Just reporting the folk and watching it online on Zoom with the live time code and comment. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ann. All right, I'm going to go ahead and...
Two more raised hands just showed up.
Okay. Chair, one of the people that has just raised a hand was previously with a raised hand in this Zoom meeting and disappeared off, and I think that was accidental.
That's fine.
Celeste?
Go ahead, Celeste. You there?
I'm here. Yes.
Thank you.
Is it my turn?
She spoke.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. My name is Celeste Rivera. I am a mother who recently lost my son, my only son, January 26 of this year. He was part of the fire recovery efforts for the Palisade Fires on help restoring them, and also helped with the Woolsey Fire, Thomas Fire, and a very good young work ethic and reputation in the city of Malibu. And unfortunately, my son, after an enormous amount of effort and hours on the drive home on the PCH near Sycamore Canyon Cove, right before there's a narrow turn, he collided into that. It was dark, it was raining, there was no lighting, no protective crash cans, no barrier walls, and my son, work truck engulfed in flames, retrapped, and killed my son. I stand with, not only for my family, who is just very slim, my daughter and my grandson, and we ask that you please consider and make the PCH safe. Had those, maybe the signage, the lighting, signals, protective crash cans, a barrier would have been placed, my son's life would have been prevented, and he would have made it home. So I hope you consider to please, please, please help make this PCH. Right now, it's one of the most difficult losses that I've ever felt in my life, losing a child. And it's not easy. He just turned 27 on October 30, and he was only 26 when he died this year. Thank you, and please consider moving forward and making this safe.
Thank you very much.
There was one more hand that came out right after. Do we want to...
Yes, let's go ahead.
It's going to be Carlos?
Carlos, you there?
You're unmuted, Carlos?
Okay, here we go. Yes, thank you. Chair and Commissioner, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a Pepperdine University alumni, also a member of Canejo Valley Cyclists, and we lost one of our cyclists in February of this year up by Sycamore... and we lost one of our cyclists in February of this year up by Sycamore Cove, John McLaughlin. Pacific Coast Highway, let's be honest, is no longer rural. Every day, tens, thousands of vehicles are there, not just on the weekends, but it is a commuter thoroughfare to the South Bay. The $55 million from Caltrans is not about urbanizing Malibu. As some of the folks have stated, and I can appreciate your concern on the lifestyle, it's about modernizing safety. Too many people have been lost, and leadership, I think at this point in time with this opportunity, will be facing the reality and acting to prevent the next tragedy, and the next, and the next. Caltrans own studies show that lighting and sidewalks alone don't stop crashes, but smarter design, speed control, and better crossings do, especially higher visibility for us cyclists. I myself have been grazed by motorist's mirror, right by Leo Carrillo. These improvements can save lives without changing Malibu's character, and I urge you to please grant the CDP and lead the city forward, protecting the community, families, and our future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you want to come on up. I'm sorry, we had two cards for you, and I wasn't sure if you had been sharing time with someone or what was going on, so I'm sorry.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Tiffany Murray, and I'm here tonight to speak to you and specifically to Caltrans to oppose adding any more streetlights. Caltrans, you've heard this from the community before at the Public Works Commission, and I'm here to ask, what steps have you taken since then to truly integrate the concerns we already raised? Because your proposal needs to reflect Malibu's reality and values. Malibu is not a suburban corridor. We are a rustic coastal community that has chosen to live close to nature, to the ocean, mountains, and dark skies. We've traded convenience for a meaningful connection to this land and to the wildlife that shares it with us. Lighting up our coastline like an amusement park does not make it safer. It erases what makes this place sacred. The truth is simple. The real cause of crashes here is not darkness, it's speed and lack of separation. We've seen the proof ourselves since the Palisades fires. Eastern Malibu has had no major crashes or fatalities because the lanes were reduced and the speed limit lowered. Light doesn't slow cars, design does. Urbanizing our coastline with excessive lighting will only violate Malibu's dark sky ordinance and harm our environmentally sensitive habitats, the beaches, creeks, the wildlife corridors that makes this place alive. And on the topic of bike safety, paint is not protection. Caltrans' plan for painted Class 2 bike lanes beside 50 to 60 mile per hour traffic is unsafe and outdated. Federal guidance and your own Director's Policy 37 are clear. High-speed corridors demand physically protected lanes. Protected lanes reduce crashes by more than 40% and can be funded by generous federal programs. So I'm again challenging you to use this project as an opportunity to show leadership, to design a plan that truly reflects Malibu, its people, its wildlife, and wild beauty. Because Malibu doesn't need more light, it needs more listening, and it needs a Caltrans that protects what makes this coastline one of the last truly magical places left in California. Thank you.
I have a question. Are you, do you serve as the Commissioner for the city of Malibu?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
But I'm speaking as an individual.
Okay. In the future, if you could please just say, I'm here as a private citizen, because you're making it sound like you're expressing a consensus opinion from your commission.
Okay, I apologize for that.
Yeah, and it's really confusing and almost misleading.
Understood.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, is that it?
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna go ahead and close this hearing, bring it up to the dais. John, would you like to go--
Did we want to have rebuttal?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. The applicant, would you like to make a rebuttal statement? Okay. Okay, the public hearing is still open. I'm so sorry.
Just want to, I'd like to address the sidewalk at Pepperdine that I hear tonight that there've been talk that is not connected to anywhere. Just want to emphasize again, this is an interim project when it comes to bike lane and sidewalk. And the sidewalk proposed at Pepperdine, we have looked on the south side to see we could fit it in there so we don't have to put one on the north side. But we have some cultural sensitive area on the south side of the highway, so we can put a sidewalk there. But the sidewalk is needed and is stretched like we explained before. The bluff park, and then you have bus stop, it's not just serving the community for the university or the estate, it's serving the whole public that come to this area. So there are people taking buses, may come to this area and need to go to that bluff park also. And we are also have to be committed, comply with SB Senate Bill 916. That mean we have to implement sidewalk by lane for motor model that also address users such as wheelchair and not just pedestrian walking. So having a sidewalk will basically comply with that, provide the alternative for the wheelchair that need to use. Without the sidewalk, the wheelchair would not be able to get across to the bluff park and other. So I just want to point out that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lee, do you want to say something? You have seven minutes to correct the record.
We'll hold it in case we need to do more.
We're closing the hearing. This is your shot. We could ask questions, but this is your last chance to basically--
Nancy's covered it well.
Okay.
We've done our best with a short timeframe since the girls were killed. This is an opportunity. We heard the community's cries back then. Our team worked really hard. The road safety audit included LA County Sheriff. Our first one, November of 2023, Captain C2 was there, another sergeant was there. We went through a short area. We came back in January. We did the segment. LA County Sheriff was a participant in that. They were an advocate for items. So I'm going to ask you with what you're hearing here, not everything is correct. We had LA Sheriff integrated with our road safety audit.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing and bring it up to the dais then. Before we start, I would like to make a comment, though, and then I'll go to you, John. Over the last couple of years, I've been watching our city council meetings. The last, there was only one item that the last election was held on, and that was public safety. After the incident with Pepperdine, there were emergency declarations was tried to be called by the city of Malibu to force the change of the highway speed. This is a serious matter, and I, you know, I think that we really, really need to look at the big picture in regards to this.
I just, I just want to make a quick comment, and that is, we've got, I think, I think the bike person said 150, 200 emails saying, just to prove it, okay? And we also have had hearings with public safety where apparently they had a lot of problems. Now, we have a lot of documentation from Michael Shane and from Malibu Township Council that points out, for example, 40 to 55% more deaths if you don't have protected bike lanes. Those are deaths, okay? And the fact that we don't have, we have a lot of concerns about protecting bikes and parking, et cetera. So this is, this is more complicated than just say yes, you get $50 million. Michael Shane pointed out that we can have 80% funding for protected bike lanes for free from the federal government. He also pointed out that not having that can cost $15 million per rec, okay, to the city. So we have, we're going to discuss this tonight, but it's, it's not political, it's safety we're after. And there are certain things. I've, I've lived here 54 years. I figured out today. I've driven the highway at least 20,000 times, okay? So we're more familiar with what happens at night, where parking is, et cetera. Why, why light shouldn't be here and shouldn't be there. Then, then possibly, you know, we have experts from Caltrans, but they don't drive the highway 20,000 times. They aren't locals. They don't understand lighting in rural areas. For example, this is a highway legally, but can you imagine that the highway to Las Vegas is, what, 200 miles? Can you imagine 20,000 lights? Do you think that would make it safer? Or 40,000 lights, whatever it would take. So we have to look at that tonight and make some adjustments. As Michael Shane said, and several other speakers, there are adjustments that need to be made. So I hope that we discuss safety more than money and more than politics. And that's what I'm going to try to do tonight, and try to come up with some solutions that make it better and not more dangerous. Because some of the things proposed last meeting, I considered more dangerous. And so I just want to say that to start off the meeting.
I just wanted to start by thanking all of you that come here to spoke and those that came to speak on Zoom. And I want to thank Caltrans for coming back with some updates to the lighting. And that's just kind of it for the beginning.
Marnie?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank everyone that came to speak. You know, some of you really were hard, you know, it was really hard to hear what you had to say, and it made a difference. And the fact that you came here and said that will probably or possibly change the outcome of how things go. So thanks for taking the time to come and share your opinion.
Nancy, Nicole, I'd like to bring you up and ask you a couple of questions, please. I was bringing up to Commissioner Caymans, through all my years living here in Malibu, one thing I've seen that's been a constant during the school year at Pepperdine are student, like cross-country groups running around Malibu. And one place I see them run is on the lawn, that they could be using a sidewalk to, for that. And we have a sidewalk on the Malibu Canyon side of your campus. It seems like tying this all together. Is Pepperdine opposed, or they just want more, more consensus? What do you guys really want?
If I might offer just a clarification on that particular piece, in our meeting with Caltrans, they also raised the need for the sidewalk was at least in part based on the fact that our cross-country and track teams were running along that portion. And so we checked with our cross-country and track teams. They actually don't do that. They do run some, if, and if they are going to, they are going to run on the grass, not on a sidewalk. So that wouldn't be where they would be training. And so I don't think the sidewalk, if the reason for, the stated reason for putting it in is to better support the track and cross-country teams for Pepperdine, they are, they are not in the roadway of PCH. They're running on the, if they are there at all, they would be running on the grass of Alumni Park, and they would continue to run on that grass even if you put the sidewalk there. So I don't think that's a necessary reason for the implementation of the sidewalk. And then are you saying, are we opposed to this project?
Are you opposed to, Aine, is there a way to find consensus where you guys feel comfortable in Caltrans? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I just would like, I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. So what I heard was that a sidewalk to nowhere right now, just without any clarification or commitment to a Phase B or a future project that would make this sidewalk contiguous to other areas of Malibu, would make Pepperdine more comfortable with moving forward with this phase right now. But if there wasn't any commitment of a future option, then you would prefer to keep the, the grass area the way that it currently exists.
Yeah, I think what, maybe just to clarify, to make sure that there's no confusion about what we're saying. We're saying either the sidewalk segment could be removed from this project and the project approved without it, or if the intent was to keep that part of the project in the scope, and that was up for consideration, then we would ask for the commission to condition the implementation of that sidewalk to address two issues. One is the one you raised. We have been in meetings with LASD, and they had advised that the recommendation was for a continuous sidewalk all along PCH, which was connecting major thoroughfares, and they had not recommended just the specific segment between Malibu Canyon and John Tyler Drive. I know that Caltrans has repeatedly indicated that there's a safety audit that disputes that. We have asked for that time and time again and have not received it. And so if there's information out there that we are not being made aware of, it's not for a lack of interest in us trying to get that. And so, so because of that, we are left to have the understanding that the segment of sidewalk with the information that we have now is not, is not improving safety in that area, has the potential to reduce safety. And so in that fashion, we're asking for a plan to build continuous operational sidewalks to logical terminating points that extend to the west of John Tyler Drive and the east of Malibu Canyon Road. And then second, I would just say, the other consideration that we have, and I know you all know the, have an understanding about the position that we play in emergency response, not only for our campus but for the community, I think there, what we're trying to do is get all the right parties to agree that whatever the proposed project is would not compromise the emergency services that we provide. And so at a minimum, I think we would need to understand the number of people that are expected to utilize the sidewalk, how first responder ingress and egress would be facilitated, and then how physical clearances for fire and medical helicopter operations will be maintained. And so I really think that, to summarize our position, we are not trying to stand in the way of the approval of this project. We think that there are, there is an opportunity for the commission to condition the implementation of this particular part of the sidewalk to address those two issues, and we would be willing, of course, to continue discussions with Caltrans.
Wait, one second. Hold on, everyone. Nancy, Lee, would you guys like to--
Address that?
Yes. I think we have something to work with here.
So for the two conditions that Nicole has asked for, that, as we explained earlier, the sidewalk that we put in and the curb that we put in, amountable, is not going to hinder the access for the first responder to access into that lawn.
Wait, one second. What about her request? Let's try--
That was one of the requests, right?
Yes, yes.
So that request could be complied. The request about the other sidewalk that's south of Malibu Canyon and then north of Malibu Tyler, John Tyler.
No, she said, what'd you say? West of John Tyler?
And east of now--
Okay. You could say east and south, depending on how we, it's the same thing. We don't have any funding because that project, that segment will require additional funding and additional driveway from the adjacent property in order to implement that. So we don't have anything programmed at this time. But as we explained earlier, why we believe the segment of this sidewalk is needed.
Well, I think, I think that what she's asking is, would Caltrans be comfortable, I'm just asking the question, be comfortable with a condition, not now, because I know there isn't funding, but in the next phase, that it would be required, that this would be a committed component?
I don't think it's fair to ask them to agree to that. I don't think they can do that.
So I'm asking, I'm just, okay. So then would it be fair to say, would there be a problem to remove this portion of the project, and then in the next phase, whenever it may be or not be, and if sidewalks were to be added, that it would then be with a contiguous sidewalk project to bring it some, to, you know, a more public--
That would be up to the Commissioner and the city of Malibu. The way we, Caltrans seen it is that we have money to do this segment of sidewalk right now, and we'd like to do it for the public to comply with--
Would it be possible, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, I'm just trying to take, would it be possible to take this wonderful, we have this funding, and maybe use it to provide protection or barriers where possible or where feasible that would not, that would not hinder parking for the bike lanes? that would not, that would not hinder parking for the bike lanes?
So if anything being removed as a condition, I guess we could comply with that. However, it will be on the city responsibility if there's any request in the future for this segment of the sidewalk to be built, to be funding for that segment of sidewalk. We would not be responsible for that.
The other part that, you know, just a recollection from having been out there roughly two years ago, was that there is sidewalk on two other sides of Alumni Park, Malibu Canyon Road and John Tyler. And part of the thing with LA County Sheriff was connecting those sidewalk areas as well. And there was not a discussion of continuous sidewalks down PCH, down the grade to Cross Creek Road, Webway. There was not a discussion further west. The team looked through things. We've heard from your city council several times over rural character. We're doing our best to maintain that rural character. The team selected porous colored concrete as a way to integrate things in and provide the access. And so we're, we are open, as we've talked about, to mountable curbs, dikes, while looking at the sidewalk on the other sides of the Alumni Park.
Because, one last question. Because you were moving, initially you were talking about doing 42 light poles. Isn't there a little bit more money left over to expand the project?
There's not. What we do is we fund the items that are specifically called for that are already there. This would be an addition, and then we would wind up with environmental clearance issues. That's the challenge we get into. We're at a point right now, when we talked earlier about continuous bike lanes and taking out parking to get that in, that would change the character of the project, create consternation or challenges with coastal and other aspects. I think your attorney may be in a better position to address that than I am. And we have our environmental staff here too, if we need to bring them in.
All right, who's next? Let's go ahead and let Marnie go.
I request that you follow this council policy on running a meeting and do it in order of request.
Okay, go ahead, John.
The chair runs the meeting, so that's, the chair gets to decide. And if, Chair, if I can make a.
Go ahead, Kellen first.
Perfect. So the purpose of, this is a continuing meeting, so you can have as many discussions as you want. But staff has made clear that there are some deadlines. So my recommendation is after you get as much discussion in as you want, we have to either vote this up or down and create conditions. So while last time we had a very robust discussion about the issues and the concerns, tonight, if you were going to try to either approve or deny this, has to be getting us to the yes or the no, as opposed to just continuing the discussions about the issues, which, you know, we've discussed quite robustly and I think are very important.
Okay. Okay, on that note, I think I'd like to do a straw vote between us.
I would like to speak. Thank you.
John?
I have questions.
Commissioner, the chair runs the meeting, so let's, let the chair run the meeting, and I'm sure he will let you speak. But we need to let the chair run the meeting.
I'd like to go ahead and do a straw vote on the reduction of the lights and also all the lights having dark side, the amendment that the staff is recommending.
Are you actually suggesting that 20 minutes into our discussion, we're going to decide everything?
No. We're taking one point of this.
Why are we doing a straw vote on lights? We haven't even discussed them.
Commissioner, again, the chair runs the meeting.
Then all you're doing is having all these people come here, make comments, write hundreds of emails, and then say, well, let's just decide it. No discussion.
We can have our discussion.
Well, you won't even let me ask a question on the sidewalk.
Go ahead and ask a question.
Okay. Can I ask you, what is the PCH master plan? And what is the timing on it?
So the PCH master plan has been finalized. The department is now looking at small options that are eligible for programming under our State Highway Operational Protection Program. We're working on incremental items there that we can move forward. We're trying, we have to do this in a pace manner and pick things up and look for funding opportunities.
Okay, so we're talking.
You said a question.
Oh, I only get one, okay.
You just asked for one, Skylar.
Okay, I want two. I want, I want the same thing. You let everybody else.
When you're chair, you can do what you want.
Okay. You want to kill this project is what you want to do. And that's, that's.
Commissioner, we have rules of decorum. Let's not argue back and forth, please.
I was just going to ask if we can try to finish our conversation on this sidewalk and then move on to the lighting. That was my comment. So I'm like 50/50 on the sidewalk. I don't know if there's a way for us to carve it out or not because I don't feel, like, I'm not confident that. I would just like to get the buy-in of a university that has thousands of students and it's going basically right in their front yard.
I agree.
That's what's challenging for me. And I, I feel like there's a way for us to get there. And I think that that's what we got to do, so.
Can I just ask, I'm, let's, a really quick question.
I just want to ask Nicole specifically. Is your, if your comfort level for the university is that in terms of emergency protection and the safety of the university, and you feel confident in the way that the sidewalk is designed and it meets a rural nature, are you, would the university be comfortable under, you know, a bigger picture idea that this is actually a good, a possibly good thing moving towards the future here?
Sorry, you can tap me on the shoulder.
No, not at all. Just a couple of things I would say there. Again, we are not opposed to the project. And what we're saying though, and rural, the rural aspect of it is not something that we're raising. What we're trying to ask to be addressed are two safety concerns. One, we have not been made aware or had information presented to us that a discontinuous portion of sidewalk does not present the risks and actually increase pedestrian safety, or excuse me, decrease pedestrian safety along that portion. And so that's why we're proposing that the sidewalk needs to be extended to a logical terminus so we don't dump people out on PCH. The second question, I would say, is that we would like to be able to have concrete information, not conclusive statements, but information provided to us that the concerns about emergency ingress and egress, the understanding of how many pedestrians will be here, and the assurances that we won't be interfering with emergency services. So I think I would agree with you all. We believe there's a path forward. We are glad to continue conversations with Caltrans. And so we proposed two conditions in our letter to the commission. And I think we would be very glad if you were to adopt those, to continue our conversations and find a path forward so that according to those safety aims, that we could work with Caltrans to figure out how to do this in an appropriate way.
Nicole.
Point of order. Are you going to run this meeting according to protocol or not?
Commissioner, rules of decorum. If you, you need to let the chair run the meeting, please. Everyone's going to get time to talk. We're going to be here as long as we need to.
I doubt it, but I can.
I mean, I think we will. I'm, I will stay as long as we need to. But the chair runs the meeting. We have rules of decorum. Let him do his job, please.
So what I'm hearing from you got, from the university and is that there's some concerns over the ingress and egress with the safety and those things and how that sidewalk is designed? Is that?
Yes, that's part of it, along with an understanding about when we place pedestrians in that area. Will that impede the emergency access to the helipad and other emergency services areas in Alumni Park?
I sort of see that two ways. One, there's nothing that prevents pedestrians from being there right now. The only thing right now is that if they're there, they're in a more unsafe manner than they would be if there was a sidewalk there. And we can, there's, there's two different sides to that, right? But I would see if there's a possibility of a path forward whereby we condition this to say that in regards to the sidewalk, we just need the university and their emergency staff to coordinate that, along with, I would say, LA County Fire and the sheriff to meet with Caltrans before any concrete's poured, and you figure out a plan to build that sidewalk.
Yes, and that's exactly.
And you're good with that.
But not just that. We have to address the discontinuous sidewalk. Because, so yes, I'm in agreement with that portion that that addresses, if there's a coordinated effort and everyone agrees that we can continue emergency operations in a good manner, then that would address the.
So in understanding that, and the next step that you're talking about with the continuous sidewalk, I do not see a continuous sidewalk going west or north of John Tyler.
Yeah.
And if anything, it may, at some point, probably not in the near future, go down towards Cross Creek. So I think that Pepperdine has to sort of accept the fact that potentially at some future date, with some magical money that California is going to pull out of some coffers, there may be a sidewalk that gets it down to Cross Creek. The hardest thing about any of this is we live in a place that, for the most part, doesn't favor sidewalks. And sidewalks have been a very contentious thing for a lot of neighborhoods, aside from the country view of state's neighborhood, which is kind of ironic in all of this. They do have sidewalks, right? Where I live and a handful of the other commissioners live, or some of them live in areas with sidewalks. Some of us live in areas without sidewalks. So I just, I think we're all trying to balance all those things. But I see a way forward with you guys working together on the emergency stuff. I think that can be done relatively simply.
Agreed.
And we can move this forward.
Yeah. I'm in agreement with that. I think the discontinuous sidewalk, for us, it becomes a question of responsibility as well. If the intention of putting something in creates a new safety risk that otherwise doesn't exist, it's difficult for us to say simply because there's not a plan for a sidewalk means we should just accept this one. It seems like, in that case, if there is never a plan, then if someone is able to address the questions we have about the potential pedestrian risks that are created by the discontinuous sidewalk, we're of course open to those conversations. But they don't work.
As a commissioner, I very much understand the concerns. But I think about when we look about this in a larger picture, understanding the funding restraints and the other things with Caltrans, that I would just like to see Pepperdine accept, okay, this is going to happen. We're going to get this done in a way that's the best way for our emergency services and other things. I think the last thing any of us would want to see is Pepperdine with a big fence in front of it.
Oh, no, that's not what we're intending, of course.
But I'm just saying that that's sometimes, you know, like, if all of a sudden there was a bunch of problems, that, something like that could happen. I'm not saying that's going to happen or anything.
Of course.
I'm just saying that I think there's a way for this to move forward. That's it.
May I respond? May I respond to that?
No, we're here to ask you guys questions. I'm so sorry.
Of course.
Tyler?
Yeah, so, thank you, Jared. From what I'm hearing, there's essentially three options to take a straw vote on for the sidewalk issue. One is the complete removal of the sidewalk in front of Pepperdine. So approve the project and other components without this portion of the sidewalk between John Tyler, Malibu Canyon Road. That's option one. Option two is that the proposed sidewalk is only approved if it meets the requests of the Pepperdine University ask. And then option three is approve the project as proposed by Caltrans. I just want to be clear that those are the three options we're considering.
Except, except that the portion.
Do we get to speak in order that you stated?
I just, I just want to say, but the one.
Do we have to interrupt anytime we want to?
I just wanted to clarify.
John, please?
I just wanted to clarify, Tyler, that I think that the ask is that there would be a safety coordination between Pepperdine and Caltrans. But in terms of a commitment to any kind of future connectivity sidewalk, that's not on the table. So I just want to make sure.
That is not what we are proposing, if that's the question you're asking me.
I was going to say that.
Go ahead, Marnie.
So what I'm hearing, though, Nicole, is that you guys are not opposed to this project at all. You're opposed to that segment of the sidewalk. And according to Caltrans, they don't have the funding right now to make it contiguous. That's not part of it. And so it seems like the best solution to move forward would just be to make a motion to remove that segment of sidewalk for now with the intention of putting it back in when we're all ready to make it contiguous.
Just know it'll never come, it may never come back.
It may not come. But for right now, to approve this project, we're at least Pepperdine, who's responsible for all of those students. And I don't think they would be suggesting this be removed if they thought it would endanger any of their students. So I would say, remove this for now. And one day, we can hope for it to be even safer, but so we can approve this project and keep Pepperdine happy.
John, then Tyler.
Okay, several questions. First, and this is to the Caltrans. If you have a PCH master plan that is almost finished, are we going to come into the same situation where you're going to say, well, you got 10 days to approve it? Or is something like this going to be considered?
So the projects will progress through the project development process. This project, when the girls were killed, this capital preventive maintenance project was underway. We were tasked to, just, please let me finish, sir. You asked a question, and I want to explain a little more context. I think it will help. The girls were killed. We came through with road safety audits. We integrated the sheriff in with us for that, asks of the community, asks from council when we were here for the PCH task force meeting. We took action to move forward. This project was in progress. We've extended funding deadlines. We've identified items to go in. As far as the master plan, it is a planning document. We will have to go through the other parts. Each project development process, there's phases within it. We can talk with the team about bringing those in as we proceed. Now, I'm going to tell you, I have a concern from being tasked with safety. We performed the road safety audit. I hear the.
That was not my question. Excuse me, I, we're only asking questions here.
Commissioner, we need to have rules of decorum for the people you're speaking to.
Commissioner, we need to have rules of decorum for the people you're speaking to. So I understand, I understand, but we. I understand, we cannot interrupt people regardless of where they sit or stand. That includes me, that includes other commissioners. You cannot interrupt people. We have rules of decorum. That's all I'm saying.
Listen, I'm going to take a recess for five minutes. This is.
Okay, please don't approach any of the commissioners.
Thank you!
At this time, we're about to resume the meeting. Everyone, please either take a seat or if you want to have conversations, they need to take place outside of council chambers. Thank you.
We'll be starting the meeting as soon as the city attorney arrives. Yeah?
Do you want me to see if Nicole is still up there?
She's up there.
Okay. He is going to ask some questions.
Got to open the meeting again.
Okay. All right, can I reopen this meeting? John, do you have some questions?
Yeah, on the Caltrans person I was speaking to, I'd like to get the question answered. If there's a PCH master plan.
He's not in the room.
Oh, okay. If there's a PCH master plan in, being planned right now, why can't items like this be put into that plan instead of this plan?
So item like this, I'll consider in the master plan already. So this is like, anything that we could do under this project, as Lee explained earlier, due to the accident that happened, everybody was involved and they wanted certain items to be implemented as soon as we can. And these are the items that does not require much more time or environmental, lengthy environmental documents. So we, any item from that master plan could be implemented. That's why we're proposing this project to implement as early as we can.
Let me continue with a question. So if there is a situation where Pepperdine is objecting for safety reasons and other reasons, contiguous, et cetera, it can in fact be included in the master plan later. Is that correct?
Yes, some of this could be included, but we do not believe this, that this continuity, it is continued because right now you have sidewalk on Malibu Canyon up to PCH, you have sidewalk from John Tyler up to PCH.
But those are not Caltrans.
They are continued in that way, but I understand Nicole explained that.
No, I, that's not my question about the other, the non-Caltrans sidewalks. The question is, we're doing a CDP here. It has to be specific. It's not, you can go consult with somebody and design it another way some other time. Okay? So is there a reason why when you do your PCH master plan, you can't consider this project today? That we're discussing now that Pepperdine can have the time to do it the way they would like to have it done and consider the concerns of the Malibu West community that's been expressed here? That's, that's one, that's my main question. Yes or no? Can you do that in a later time? Not, not an explanation about December 1st or anything else. Can you do it in the master plan? Because there's other sidewalks in Malibu. I assume you're going to want to put in at other times.
Hey, Commissioner.
But the intent of this project is to bring those, bring forward this item as quickly as we can. That's what the commitment that we made to the community and to everybody.
My question is.
John? Commissioner?
Well, I actually have a question for the planning and attorney.
Yeah.
With regards to Mr. Mazza's statement about you can only deal with the coastal development plan and the plans there, we can't make modifications later. Is that correct, that we can't make any modifications to a project during construction if it has a CDP that requires something to go in and be removed later? Does it have to be removed, or can there be amendments made to make modifications?
So it depends on the substantiality of the amendments. If, if it's removing items from an approval, that can be done at the administrative level. If we are adding significant portions to the project, that may be cause for an amendment to come back to this commission. So, so my suggestion is, as Commissioner Mazza pointed out, is to be very specific about what it is we are approving here tonight, to avoid the back and forth. I don't believe that we can work on some language for the agreeable plan between Pepperdine, that that's, we have to be very concrete in what the ask is.
No, I've got more questions.
My suggestion to this commission is that there's two concrete options in front of you. One is, if you cannot make the findings for this sidewalk, that you remove it from the project or approve the project as conditioned, or as conditioned, but unless we nail down specifically what the ask is for the in-between, it won't be, the project is not before us tonight.
Commissioners, if I can ask, add as well, just to remind everybody that we stay focused on the project that's before you. It's not about a different project, or different improvements, or different locations. It's about the project that's before you.
Correct.
Not what can be added to a different project, the project that's before you.
That was not my question. My question was, essentially, there's a disagreement about this. It's fundamental. Can it be done later in a different program, which they have stated they are working on right now? It has nothing to do with our consensus on this particular thing. It's just, what is, it's the difference of saying it'll never be a sidewalk in the history of the world, or it's going to be now. Okay, that, that is not changing this project. Now, a couple other questions. And I have been instructed by.
What more questions, John?
I have been instructed by the chairman that I get one question, okay? That's how fair this hearing is going to be. Now, the question is, is there a three-foot retaining wall that would restrict trucks from driving up that hill? And is that part of this plan? Running along that whole sidewalk?
We couldn't modify that.
But right now, the question is, that is what's in the CDP request.
No, the retaining wall is not at this location. That's why we asked for a 13-foot temporary construction easement into the Pepperdine grass area to regrade that, so that we don't have to put a tall retaining wall, other three-foot retaining wall.
You're saying you're not, that's not part of this project, a three-foot retaining?
Not at this location.
Okay, and how are you going to get by the approximately 20-foot by 20-foot culvert? It's right on the highway there.
You're talking about where they have the treatment?
It's about 50 feet from the corner of Canyon Road and.
We're talking about Pepperdine right now.
We're talking about Pepperdine.
Right, for that area, yes, because.
I mean, John Tyler, I mean, Malibu Canyon.
Malibu Canyon, I understand that the water treatment area.
It drains that whole lawn.
That area, we do have a short retaining wall, but the retaining wall is more to hold up the roadway than it's sticking up. So it's a little different scenario in that location.
Okay, if that's my only question, I'm going to ask for consensus to remove this from the project.
Before, before we do that, I have a, I have a one more question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so Nicole, this is for you. So I really, this is a safety, we're talking about safety, right? That's what this is, it's a, it is a repaving project, but it's a PCH safety improvement project. And I just want to make sure that you are comfortable removing the sidewalk that has been presented as a safety condition to help safety, and you're comfortable saying you would, you would be fine if we just take it out of the project?
Yes, we would be, because the information that has been presented to us doesn't include an understanding of why it's needed or an explanation of how it will create safety. All the information that we have provided to suggest that there might be consequences negatively impacting safety on PCH have not been addressed. So yes.
So then I, go ahead, Marnie, did you want to?
No.
Okay, then I'm going to ask, do, do we have consensus just to remove, just to remove that portion from the sidewalks proposed in the overall project? And is, and is that okay? Can we do that, Caltrans?
So I think where we're going to get into, there's a couple factors here. Senate Bill 960 requires us where feasible, and we have right-of-way to put in complete street features, which the sidewalk would include. And we have the right-of-way, the proposal for the sidewalk is inside our right-of-way in an area that can be regraded. The second part I would like to point out was our team provided information, and I believe it's gone to the city sometime back, that our standards are about providing connection. There's no specific requirement for data. We are providing a connection between a residential area, a park, and you have a sidewalk on John Tyler, you have a sidewalk on Malibu. We are connecting those. The sidewalk on Malibu Canyon runs up, I believe it goes down, approaches the area right down through here, and connects through further. So from my standpoint, the controversies on the sidewalk, I have concerns about with the battle we've had here, whether we'll ever, even if the commission puts us off or conditions it, whether we'll ever be able to get any other sidewalk built with what I'm seeing here. The other question I have is, if it's conditioned, is that allowed if we do not have a funding plan in place for other sidewalks at this point?
Tyler?
So again, we don't have that design in front of us. That is, has to be evaluated for all sorts of impacts. Tonight, we're evaluating this project for impacts to public parking. We're evaluating for scenic resources. We're evaluating for public safety. That project is not in front of us tonight. We cannot decide on that unless we're very concrete with what it is that we're requiring them to do. So unless you say, this project is only approved if we have sidewalks from John Tyler through the east side of, of the city of Malibu.
Okay, I have a question for you, Lee. Is the funding in jeopardy if we remove the sidewalk?
I don't know what our next steps will be if you remove it. With what we'd have to go through then with the conditions surrounding SB 960, we may have to go through appeals process. And if that delays, then we're into next steps.
Can you clarify what SB 960 is? Because you mentioned it's complete streets.
It's Senate Bill Weiner. Nick, can you come up?
Because PCH isn't a street.
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioners, if I could also touch on a few things real quick, just for clarification. So a couple things keep getting brought up by Pepperdine and some of the other staff here. The sidewalks are not discontinuous. I keep hearing that brought up. They're talking about east of John, or west of John Tyler and east of Malibu Canyon. However, the sidewalk, the way it's being discussed is confusing people. This will be a continuous sidewalk from John Tyler to Malibu Canyon that allows people to get from both sides from John Tyler over there, which can also access up to Civic Center, which then heads down. Okay, additionally, with the SB 960, this is in Caltrans right-of-way. They have the right to proceed to put the sidewalk in if it's within their right-of-way. They don't need justification for it. So you're going to, the attorney is going to touch on that, but that's what that is. They're here making their case to try to get approval for this. They're working with Pepperdine staff with a manable curb to allow for the safety apparatuses to get up there. So something to keep in mind, this is a safety project.
Question? Question?
And then you, John.
Yeah, we have a, we're going around in circles. So there's, there's the project, like Tyler said, before us, and as staff said, at a certain point, you just have to decide whether you can make the findings or not. There's, there's the practical considerations, the personal, the moral considerations, but there's the legal considerations, which is what my job is. You have to make findings or not make the findings. And the one that's been discussed tonight and last meeting was safe, public safety or lack of public safety as to the specific portion of the sidewalks around Pepperdine. The vast majority of you, and I'm not telling you how to vote, but what I've heard is that you cannot, or you don't think you can make the findings as to this portion of the sidewalk. So you have a project presented before you. You can either approve it as is, deny it because you can't make the public safety findings, or you can approve it with conditions, which would be to remove the portion where you don't find public safety. which would be to remove the portion where you don't find public safety as met.
How, but, but Kellen, I disagree with you, because what we're doing is we're gathering information through this discussion.
I, I call John next, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
Okay, Kellen, on, on Michael Shane's report, page two, he gives an analysis of how this all violates state law and federal law. Okay, three different points. Now, there, we're being told, oh, you gotta do it, because it's the law. Now, Michael Shane's researched this, unprotected bike lanes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and California Director's Policy Number 37, DP-37 establishes complete streets as a default for, for consideration, okay? SB 960, recently enacted, mandates consideration of, that's cycling, okay? But, this whole thing, for them to say, it's a law, we gotta put it in, don't they have to say, everywhere on Coast Highway, if they're making the claim they're making-
They're not saying it's a law.
He said, we have the right to do it, and we have to do it.
John, John, can I just talk to you for a sec?
No, no, no. Let me just finish my question, please, okay?
Same thing applies, John has the floor here.
His point was, we gotta put it in, it's our deal, okay? Now, that would mean that everywhere in Malibu, for example, at Heather Cliff, where they're only putting in 50 feet.
I, I would not agree with, I don't think that's what they've said, but I also wouldn't agree with that interpretation of, of that. So, no, they don't need to, and also, a policy is not a law.
Huge leaps, huge leaps there.
So, if, if you can't make the finding of public safety on those items, then you either say no to the whole project, or you condition it to make the findings where, where you can. So, SB 960 doesn't say it goes everywhere, and they can put it wherever they want, no, it doesn't.
Good call.
Are you negotiating with her?
No, I, question, staff brings up a very legitimate point in regards to east of Malibu Canyon and west of John Tyler, you know, why, why are you so adamant in regards to that?
Are you meaning, why are we concerned that there's no further sidewalk on either, either side of it?
This, this sidewalk is connecting basically Malibu Country Estates, it is a continuous sidewalk that's connecting Malibu Country Estates and Pepperdine to Civic Center.
Yeah, I think Pepperdine's already connected to Civic Center, we have other ways through the campus, of course. But, I think the, the bigger question is, we have not received information that would demonstrate to us a need for this sidewalk, that's part of it. We specifically asked Caltrans to, for an understanding of the number of pedestrians that are using this area, and we were told that that would never be part of their analysis. And so, that seems like it's important to us to be able to make the determination that you're asking, especially because, even if it were a very limited number of people that were using that sidewalk, the then balancing act that we have to do is to say, if there's a discontinuous sidewalk put in, does that create a worse situation than what we have without a sidewalk there? And so, that's the question that we feel responsible to ask, and so, that's why we were saying, if there's a connected sidewalk for people to go beyond those, those areas, then that, that would change the discussion, we believe. I would also just make the point that SB 960, that's, we have never heard that that would be part of this, so I just wanna, maybe, this might help you, though, I think, I just wanna say, I think if you're being pushed to the sidewalk because of SB 960, the language there says that the elements, project elements should be put in to the extent feasible and appropriate. And so, that goes directly to the question that we're asking about this discontinuous sidewalk, is it feasible and appropriate?
You know, as staff said, it is not a, it is a continued sidewalk, it is giving a homeowners association with a couple hundred homes access to Civic Center.
That's your opinion.
May I speak to that?
Yes.
I believe that the Malibu Country Estates, and I won't speak on their behalf, but I understand that they have responded to the city about questions, and I know that Una spoke here, but I, Malibu Country Estates is suggesting that they are not in favor of this sidewalk, and so, I might suggest that you lean on their expressed interpretation as well, so.
Hey, Commissioner?
Well, go ahead, Marnie.
Chair, just, real quick, the public hearing is closed, Pepperdine is not the, the applicant here, so I would just strongly urge that we focus on our discussions-
I hope you feel that we've given you a fair shake at this hearing, also.
I would like to make a motion to remove that segment of sidewalk with all the discussion we've had, and see how the rest of, how we feel about that.
I would make a secondary motion that we don't remove it, and that we keep it in there, and have the design be done in a manner in which Caltrans and Pepperdine and LA County come up with approved design for the sidewalk that accommodates for the emergency vehicles.
I would second that.
That is not allowed.
Kellen, how can I form-
This is the CDP, you cannot design something after you've passed it.
How can I formulate the design of that, to incorporate that?
The motion would be allowed, it would be, you're approving it as-is with a condition, because you can't make the findings otherwise, that the parties that you just named have to work together to put it together, I, I don't know what the concern is, the public safety concern?
I think I have language.
The concern is, is the ingress and egress of emergency vehicles to that area-
Got it.
-with the sidewalk.
So, we're not changing the sidewalk, we're not lengthening it in your motion, we're not-
No, we're not lengthening it, but you'd be basically changing the pitch.
I know, I'm saying, we're not changing it, so, it's the same project with the parties that are involved, working together to address concerns regarding ingress and egress, but Tyler has language that I think he-
Can I ask you something? If I came in with a house, and my neighbor didn't want where my driveway was, could you say, here's a CDP, you guys figure out where the driveway's going?
I'm, I'm not gonna do what-ifs, we're talking just about this project.
Well, you gotta, you gotta, you know, do things legally, because they haven't held December 1st before this gets appealed.
So, Commissioner Ramazza, we are, here's some language, because it would, it would speak to this proposed sidewalk in the plan set today, right? Is only approved, so the proposed sidewalk on PCH in front of Pepperdine University, between Malibu Canyon Road and John Tyler Drive, is only approved if Caltrans coordinates with the Los Angeles County Sheriff, Los Angeles County Fire Department, and Pepperdine University on an agreeable plan for the design of the sidewalk.
Is that what you're seconding?
That sounds great.
Can I ask a question? Does anybody ever review that? Or they just say, hey, we decided-
We can add more language if you want, that the, that the action must be submitted to the city, uh, uh-
And then does it come back to us?
Uh, we can, we can, we can make that a condition as well.
I'm comfortable with that man, Travis, being a part of that conversation right there, and getting it done.
So, we can, we can make it a part that the city staff is sent the agreeable plan, or that the, the, the plan comes back to the Commission on Consent for your, not consideration, but just for your acknowledgement.
I don't wanna see it again.
Okay.
You probably will.
So, I'm just giving the, I'm just giving the alternatives to this commission, so that's the language we could use with that suggested change if we want.
Okay, so we have two motions, do we have a second to Marnie's motion?
We, we-
To remove the sidewalk.
Okay, we have two, we have two competing motions in regards to this aspect, because we're not voting on this right now, except for a straw vote, right?
Correct. And typically, we start with a substitute motion.
Correct.
Okay, so, are you, is your second still stand?
My second's, yes, just got it.
Okay, so, that's the sec, that one goes first, then?
The second motion goes first, which is the one that I've proposed.
We're, we only have one CDP, so we're-
We're just doing a straw poll on this, on this one item, the sidewalk.
So, all, all in favor of Skyler's suggestion?
Substitute.
Substitute. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Four to one?
That would move forward, three to two.
Did you vote, no?
I just, I want to, please, I want this to be removed from the-
Okay, then that's not-
So, I just have one question.
Marnie, I have a question, though. Are you comfortable with removing it if it jeopardizes the entire project? Are you comfortable with that?
But I don't think it would jeopardize the entire project.
I just, no, 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 he just said, that's not true. He, what, if you take this out, and this is money given to-
No, I want the project to, I want this to progress, but I also want to not jeopardize the safety of the university that, that has had this-
Okay, I, I'm gonna, Lee, could you please restate, could you please restate what she said, because I don't think Marnie heard it. So, I'd like you to be really clear, so she understands, and if you're comfortable with that-
No, he doesn't have to restate anything, I don't need anybody to restate anything. What I'm understanding is that if we remove the sidewalk, you're saying that we're gonna lose all 50 million, and it's likely that we won't get the safety plan at all. Is that accurate?
No, we're not saying that, but it's not the decision that I can make today.
Is it, is it going to jeopardize the project?
Yeah.
Yes.
There is a funding opportunity from-
Yes.
California Transportation Commission, it is, the amount is designed based on the project that's been presented, so if things change, there is a potential that the funding source changes. They cannot, and I cannot speak to the what-ifs of that, so, that's where it's at.
So, I would ask Nicole, who, you know, this is a Pepperdine, it's not Pepperdine's land, but it's-
This is not a dialogue, if you have-
It's okay, let her out.
A specific question.
But it can only be specific questions, it's not a debate with Pepperdine.
I might be able to propose a solution that might move forward, if, if I understand it correctly, don't let me put words in your mouth, but I understand the proposal to be, to approve this portion of the sidewalk with the condition that the Public Works approval, along with Public Safety, Pepperdine, first responders, ensure that emergency egress and ingress isn't impeded by this project, right? If we could add to that, if Pepperdine, Caltrans, the sheriff, and the city can do a study that concurs that the discontinuous sidewalk does not create additional pedestrian-
We cannot, no.
Do a study as a whole.
We, we also can't create a condition of work together, it's, this is an applicant project approved by the-
That's no problem.
-by the commission, so, we can say that they get advice and input from these different parties or whatnot, but we can't have outside parties like Pepperdine signing off on the projects that we're approving.
Can, can we, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Elizabeth's question, or really Marnie's, was, if we don't do the sidewalk, is the whole thing off?
That's a big question.
Well, well, the, the big question mark is, when we eliminated, when we will eliminate 14 streetlights, is the whole project off?
Commissioner Ramazza, hold on, let me-
That's the same thing.
I, I answer that question, no one knows for certain, there is a certain amount of funding that is tied to this project as designed, so if we change it, there is a potential that the sum of the funding could be at jeopardy. I personally, and I'm not saying this 100%, don't think all of it would be, however, there is a complicated process they have to go through if there are big changes to this process.
Okay, but my question is, is what Tyler said, you can eliminate things, you just can't add, okay?
Those are different than funding.
Now, we're talking eliminating one sidewalk, and we're getting told, as far as I'm concerned, which is a falsehood, that, oh, you're jeopardizing the whole project.
Commissioner, this, this will surprise you, I am agreeing with you, that if, I do not think if a little part of this is taken away, that the entire funding will collapse, but I cannot guarantee that, because Caltrans has to go to a different agency for funding, so they can't say it tonight, I can't say it tonight, we can't say it here.
I know, but what we can-
I, I think you are more likely right than wrong, but we can't answer that tonight, so we-
Okay, but basically, what I wanna make Elizabeth aware of is, if we change anything, they could say that, anything. If we said, make the lights purple.
But, but John, I just wanna say, they did change things, they changed, they changed, they changed several aspects, and they brought it back to us, changed, and that's terrific. What I'm not, I wanna be clear, that when you do these things, and when there's a bucket of funding, and, and believe me, funding is not abundant at this time in the government situation, be aware of that, because it's very real, and if you wanna take that gamble, then you gotta take responsibility for that, and that's the question I was asking Marnie.
No, no, you're, you're-
Can I clarify?
You're logic is correct in the fact that, and I didn't ask you a question, you're, you're-
Chair, can I?
No, I, no, they have said, we came in at the last meeting, we said, cut down the streetlights. They proposed that, we haven't said yes yet.
No.
Okay, so, so, anything, what, what they're trying to say is, anything we change, it jeopardizes the whole project. Well, that's not why we're here.
John?
We're here to make it more safe.
Elizabeth, Tyler, thank you, Chair, I just wanna make a point of clarification, because we're not, this condition that we just, I think we just straw voted on, is not adding anything, it is, it is approving that portion of the proposed project upon a condition, just like, let's, let's, let's break it down, and, you know, we, we do a lot of single-family residential here, it's no different than saying, the garage is only approved if you get clearance from Department of Fish and Wildlife, or you get clearance from California State Lands Commission. It is, is similar in nature, that it is, that portion of the project that they're proposing is only approved if they meet these requirements, which we just laid out. So, just wanna make that point of clarification, I'm sorry, we're not adding, we're, we're approving as-is, as long as they meet that condition.
Now, I understand that, the question was, is subtracting, putting it in, in jeopardy? Not adding, subtracting, and, and that is, when, when they say, when they try to tell you that, when have you ever met a, a government that would, would let you save, would not let you save money?
Commissioners, I wanna recommend, the funding is not before us tonight, so we have findings to make or not, so we gotta focus on those.
I've already, I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm, I feel clear, I'm not willing to do that, and I'm gonna second the way that we did the motion.
Well, I would like to know, does adding that condition affect the project? Does that affect the likeliness of-
Commissioner, again, we can't really focus on the funding, and if-
Well, my reason is, I would say, don't add in any conditions, leave everything as it is, leave the lighting as, so that this can get passed.
I, I understand that, but-
Or not, if you're saying, anything that we add is gonna potentially jeopardize the entirety of it, then I would wanna know that, because I'd like to know that now, before we argue everything else.
It's not, it's not gonna-
But we have to make findings, the commission has to make findings based on the findings in the resolution, not, and funding sources, and jeopardizing it is not one of them, it's public safety and these other, these other items.
Except, except to say, there's a very specific requirement, that, that when you say, I'm gonna give you this money, and if I give it to you, you're gonna need to also make sure that you do these things, and one of them is SB 90, which has to do with putting in sidewalks where they can, and I think that the motion that Skyler made is cohesive, and I think, I think it's, there's a way to work through it, and I hope that that gets done. You can, you, it's your prerogative, Marnie, but you gotta, you know, this isn't just in your backyard, this is city, this is the government.
Who's gonna fund the study that Pepperdine wants?
No, we're not doing a study, we're not doing a study.
That's not a condition.
Pepperdine wanted-
That's not, that's not part of the condition, the condition-
Oh, so Pepperdine doesn't get what they wanted?
No, they're not getting a study.
Skyler, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask if we can move on to our discussion, on to lighting.
No, there's another sidewalk we have to consider.
Is there another sidewalk that you wanna consider?
Yes.
The one at Corral Canyon?
Yeah.
Or along the beach?
Yeah.
Okay, what is the question?
Are you guys gonna do a consensus on this first, or you wanna do that one?
We have a consensus on the first one.
Okay, the Corral Canyon sidewalk drawing they gave us, okay, is using the space between the highway and the ocean, okay? Anybody who has gone by there, and I went by there four times this weekend, or this week, to check it out, does not have enough space before the cliff goes down to the beach, which is approximately 10 to 15 feet lower, on the whole length, it does not have enough space to put in a sidewalk with a curb that you have to drive over and park, and have enough room to open a door. It does not exist, okay? Six-foot sidewalk, eight-foot parking space, and three feet away from the, from the highway for a bike lane, it's not there.
Okay, I got it.
Okay? And, and you can look at your plans, and Skyler brought it up last time.
Um, I, you're correct, I did bring it up last time, and I did stop down there and walk around, and it was actually, in some areas, narrow, like you said, in other areas, it's wider, and I was gonna, I don't know if we need more clarification on that from Caltrans, I was comfortable with what they brought this evening, and having gone down there and walked around.
Yep.
I felt okay with what they proposed, I recognized that some areas, the parking areas, narrow, and, and I think that Caltrans very much recognizes the ad, advantage, and the, more importantly, the safety advantage. and the, more importantly, the safety advantage of having more space on the highway for parking than somebody opening up their door. And it seemed like that's what their intention is to accommodate as best, as feasible.
Do you realize their drawing goes to the ocean, to the mean high tide line? That's their, what they use to measure? Okay? There is no parcel in between that and the ocean. That is their drawing.
I understand that.
Okay.
And I would invite, I'm drawing it by the way, Nancy, up right now, if we even want to put the drawing up there to clarify, but it seemed fine with me.
If we could go to that slide, I would appreciate it. So we did have survey and we did provide that cross-section. We want clarification, we're not putting any bike lane in this stretch because there's parking required here. So what we're putting is the six-foot sidewalk and we do have room to put it. There's one small section, maybe close to the cliff. When we have that situation, we will put handrail or something up for the pedestrian. But majority, we will have at least five more feet beyond the back of the sidewalk with a flat area.
Can we put this light up?
Steph are working on it.
Okay, let's see. Yeah, there it is. So after the 11-foot lane, 11-foot lane, you will have one section about 12 foot to about 12.2 in general. And then the other section where is the most stricter, we have only about 9.5 to about 14, it vary in width.
I ask a question.
Sure.
What is the area where you're gonna have no parking? Is that because it's, because from the way that I saw this, it looks feasible that you have a 12 to 12.2-foot shoulder, that, but that's a zone where there's no parking allowed, but then down below where the park, limited parking, we have a nine and a half foot to 14 feet. So it sounds like we should be able to accommodate for parking in the 12-foot area.
Yes.
Unless I'm missing something.
The sign right now say no parking. I think that one is closer to...
That's just a small section where there's no parking, like by the lifeguard tower where it's red for them to park.
That's correct. And then the rest of it is limited parking hours.
It's, it's, it's six feet and 10 feet.
Well, the six feet is outside of that.
Correct.
The six feet is outside of the nine and a half. They're saying that for the limited parking, they have nine and a half feet to 14 feet. So it's unfortunate that you don't have a wider space, the whole area, but it is what it is.
You're saying that you went down and you look and it's six feet and nine, nine and a half.
Well, you also...
It's 15 feet wide off the highway.
Remember, the lanes are going to 11 feet there, right?
Yes, we are reducing the lane to gain more space for the parking area.
So you're gonna gain more space that way too.
Okay, and you realize that you have to open your car door to get out of it.
Yes.
I recognize right now that opening your car door on Pacific Coast Highway is a very dangerous thing and you better look in your mirror before you do it.
Yeah, and, and the way people park at Corral Canyon, or whatever you call that beach,
Dan Blocker.
They pull off the highway and park, okay? And instead of stopping, did stop in the, in the number two lane and tried to park.
I recognize that when I drive that section of highway, I do not drive in the slow lane, that is correct.
You think this is safe? This makes it, this, the whole thing is about making it safer and you're forcing people to stop on the highway?
No.
When people are going 50 miles an hour?
What we're doing is we're forcing people that already have to stop on the highway to then park and walk on the opposite side, not walk between their vehicle and ECH.
People on the highway do not stop in the fast lane. They pull off the road and then they park. There's enough room to do that. But they don't stop in the middle of the road.
If you drive along this section of beach, you will recognize that with cars parked there, with many of those spots, as it is, you have to stop in the slow lane to be able to park. And I think that what Caltrans is doing is trying to make it safer and I don't think we need to stand in the way of that.
Well, I, I just want to, now, I question. When they go to build this and there's a cliff and it doesn't fit...
John, if they're, if they're, they've gone through their own plan check and they have their own survey. They're not, they're not designing something that is not feasible.
Their survey does not show the beach, the cliff.
If there's any cliff, we definitely will put handrail up there for pedestrian in back of the sidewalk. We would not just let it hang.
We don't have a drawing that shows where the drop-off to the beach is, do we?
We, at this time, we don't see anywhere that it's just drop off completely. Based on our cross-section that we, our initial...
Nancy, I think that one of the bigger concerns will be in the future. I understand it's not part of this project, I'm just making a comment, is that sea level is rising invariably, the bluff underneath where the sidewalk is will erode and Caltrans will cross that bridge when it gets there to make it safe.
Do you want to be the brave soul to make the motion, Skylar?
I'm not gonna make...
Well, there's, I don't think there's a motion, yeah, we have to talk about...
As far as the straw poll, I'm okay with Caltrans' design here. I don't see...
Yes, and I second that.
Stay with me, Marnie?
No.
Okay. All right, next one?
Are we on to lighting?
Lighting, yes.
Okay, well, can we get the sign stuff out of the way? John, are we good with the sign, the sign stuff's good?
They fixed it.
Okay. Yep.
So if we're talking about lighting, do we want to talk about, there's a couple areas that I think are of concern. The area near Malibu Seafood, then Zuma View Place to Zumaraz and whatever else you're raising your hand for.
I was just gonna go to Tyler because I think Tyler had some tweaks to make sure that we better address our dark sky ordinance.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Hold on a minute. Adam presented it in his presentation, if it's easy to pull...
Also, one question is, can we mandate that the existing lights comply with that also?
Rebecca's gonna lead the actual language, but what was the question? I'm sorry, Chair.
If we can mandate that existing lighting that's gonna be remaining comply with the new lighting in regards to shielding and lumens and all that.
I'll talk to Caltrans that that's part of their funding. That sounds like a big funding issue because it could be a lot of lights.
I think we're in agreement with the language that was proposed from the gentleman that gave the staff report earlier.
Right.
I don't think there's any opposition.
I have a question on that, though. When we got the staff report last time, it said everything was gonna be dark sky compliant. And then when you looked at the, when you looked at the plans, it wasn't, okay? It wasn't shielded on one side. And then we get just some of the pages back with changes and they're not the same drawings as the, numbered drawings as before. So it's really hard to tell what's going on.
So...
Does the language cover the, are we, we're not approving the prior drawings. Is that correct?
That's correct. And also, this is all encompassing. That's why we work closely on this language. This, the project, we can't say for certain. I know that's been used a lot, that these lights are dark sky compliant. I think these lights are fully shielded in 3000 Kelvin, but that's about it. So there's a lot of components of the dark sky ordinance, including the trespass, which I mentioned before, which is really the key component to keep the light directed at the area it's supposed to serve, which in this case is the right-of-way. So to the maximum extent feasible, here's the language here, but we're asking Caltrans or requiring Caltrans to basically keep their trespass, not only fully shielded, not only 3000 Kelvin, directed downward, but also to keep their trespass within the bounds of the right-of-way and not have trespass that goes above the limits required for ECHA on the public beaches on private property. And that will be confirmed with our city consultant who does the final inspections with the light meter and measures these at the property lines.
Good, I'm good with that one.
I have...
Yeah, I'm fine.
Is this, is this essentially the same thing as gas, the gas station language?
Oh, I, I'm so sorry. Yes, it is, it is.
So, one other thing. Because this is a highway, this is, they're exempt from dark sky anyways. This is something...
That's correct.
This is something that we're just getting as a throw-on off of that.
That is correct. The dark sky ordinance expressly says that...
This is something where Caltrans is saying, "I recognize that you as a community have concerns and we are trying to accommodate those as best as possible."
Correct.
Okay, can I ask a question of, I guess, staff? Is there any study at all or anything that says that a lighted highway causes slower traffic than a dark highway?
Slower?
Yes, I mean, I'm seeing if it's safer. I assume the opposite, that when I'm driving on a dark highway, I don't drive as fast. So my question is, I'm going after safety. When you light it up like a freeway, you go faster or do you go slower? Is it safer or not safer?
The more light, the more safe the road would be. Now, is it gonna lower the speed? No. But is it gonna make the roadway more safe so you, more visible? Yes.
Yeah, I understand it's more visible, but is, is the speed our problem? Is it speed our problem?
I just like, I would, I just want to comment on that. And just because I, have you ever turned out the lights in your house and you try to walk from one area to another and you're going by braille? What I'm trying to say is, you don't, it's dangerous. It's dangerous when you cannot see.
I know, but you have probably 5000 lumens pumping out of front of your car.
I will say this, you would be in cars where you actually have to turn on the headlights.
We still have to make, we have a lot more to deal with.
Okay, well, let me, I just, I just want to...
You can do whatever you want.
That's a question, actually, you could, I could ask you a question. Is there any study that says lighting up a road, because these are 15 miles, basically dark road, okay? If you lit the whole thing, would people go faster or slower?
People are gonna drive the speed they choose to operate the vehicle at. That is what we see. Every motor vehicle driver is different and they are gonna make that choice. That is part of the licensing requirement and the responsibility they bear.
My question is, you as a person, driving a car when it's dark, would you drive that car as fast as when it was light? Would you drive on a freeway as fast as you drove on ECH with no traffic, with no lights?
So, having driven for quite a few years, I've had the experience of driving freeways and finding myself driving over a tire that somebody left in the roadway in an area that was not lit. I have had the experience of working with my colleagues where we have put in safety lighting on facilities such as the 405 freeway that were high-speed and we had fatal crashes there. It was dark. We lit it up to the point you could probably land an airplane on it. It was that well-lit. And our fatals went to zero for that timeframe until the copper wire was stolen.
Okay, thank you.
So, well, I just want to make it clear. We're picking things to make safety improvements.
I want to just say, from what I'm hearing is, we need to approve it as is and you're gonna do the best you can to work with the Malibu Public Works and the, everyone to make this something that everybody can swallow. Or at least how, and so I'd like to make a motion to approve it and stop talking about every little piece.
Well...
Who wants to second that motion?
I'd like to comment on that. You're saying, you're saying that we had 42 lights and we said, you know, get rid of the ones that are extraneous. So they come back with 27 and we should have afforded the 42.
But they can't come back with anything. This is it, this is the night, this is when it's all gonna happen.
We have, for example, as Skylar pointed out, we specifically said on E29, "Get rid of them, it's dangerous." They specifically put them in. Don't you think we should discuss that?
I think that we have done a really good job of discussing and I think that we've listened to the public. I think that we have walked through all of the different avenues of this project. I think that we want safety in Malibu. I think that we have experts before us and I think that we have done, as, it's not going to be perfect, but we've done our best to get this project to where it needs to be. And I am going to second Marnie's motion.
You really think that the people of, between, the four houses between Zumaraz and Zuma View, the four houses need eight streets, eight lights? And when, when the neighborhood comes in and says, "Are you kidding me?"
But I think that they'll work with the, if, if enough people come and have a problem, I think that they will work with them.
They're gonna, they're, they can't. They're, we passed the CDP, those eight lights go away.
No, I think they'll work with them.
I disagree with that on removing the lights.
Really?
Yes. But I was just gonna add this. I think there's a couple areas we can talk about with the lights and we can get a couple more of them out of there. That's where I'm at with it. And there's really, I think, a couple specific areas. I think Malibu Seafood, I don't see the need for a warranty. I think it's four or five lights. And the area by, between Zuma View Place and Zumaraz, Zumaraz, the intersection's already lit up and I don't see the reason for, I think it's eight or 11 lights there. I just, I can't wrap my head around it. Driving here this evening, I thought about it as well, it was dark out.
But if we take those out, are we not jeopardizing the whole project?
No.
No. You're talking about different things. You're talking about different things. When we're talking about the sidewalk, it's, it's pretty specific. However, if you have 26, 26 additional lights, and I hear the dark sky people, I get it, I really do. And now you want to reduce that, we had 46, now we're 26. Now take out 11 more. Why don't we just take them all out? Why don't we just not add any lights?
Why don't we take eight lights and move them over to...
But he just said the lights make it safer.
No, 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 you guys are...
It's a safety project.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Four houses, eight lights.
If the lights need...
Four houses.
I don't know whose turn it is, but one person has to talk.
And then the other thing is, for example, do you ever buy gas at, do you ever buy gas at Heather Cliff?
Yes, I do, all the time.
Okay, do you really think that they need a streetlight? A new streetlight right in the middle of the gas station? You really think that? You really think that? That's crazy.
We got your point. Skylar?
Make the motion.
You know...
We already have a motion, a second.
I just think that we have to look at those zones on either the drawings up there, the drawings that they gave us and pare it down a little bit. I really do. And I think that Malibu Seafood, I don't see the reason for the lights on the ocean side of it.
But they're saying it makes it safer. They're saying it makes it safer.
You know what? You can go down Pacific Coast Highway and the entire eastern end of Malibu is lit up like daylight and it is not safer. There's more accidents on that side of ECH than there are on the west side.
There is no...
And that might be because there's more cars. It might be because of a couple different things. But if you lived in one of those houses on Zumaraz that has not had streetlights forever and you can go to your house and look at the stars at night, I understand there's gonna be limited light trespass. And somebody that works as a lighting professional, as an electrical contractor...
So make the motion to take them out.
I'm going to. That's why I'm trying to look at those areas. So I think that we should have...
Can we pull that diagram, please?
I will support it.
It's the new E29, which is different than the old E24.
I don't know if they have exact, I think the only diagram that they have is the table that shows the different lights.
No, it's right here, the first one you have. Turn it over, or the lighting diagram.
We do have it on the PowerPoint, if you could pull it up.
They have a PowerPoint.
It's, it's E29 of the new maps. This is, this is ground. And this is young. And this is Yung. And then, then they didn't label them, so I had to try to figure them out. I don't know what that is.
Is this where you like to see?
That's the first drawing showing the area near Malibu Seafood.
Nancy, go ahead.
I would propose that we don't do the three lights on the, the ocean side. If you have one light at the bottom of the hill there, that's where the maiden bend is. I don't see the issue with that.
And the other, the other point is.
Lee, would you please answer Skylar's question?
So the team reviewed the crash patterns out there. And this was the area that came back with a recommend, to keep the lighting. Staff, engineering staff also reminded me that Malibu Seafood is open till after dark. And the staff leave at different times. We've also had problems with the median out there. People have run over it and wiped out the sign that we put up as a marker because they don't see things. So from our standpoint, we see the lighting as necessary.
So the reason they put it on the ocean side, because on this side, there isn't any room to put those light posts on the Malibu Seafood restaurant area.
Ability to put them on the hillside?
Right, there isn't any room. We strained the driveway and then it was at the landscape area, as you could see right there. That's what my understanding.
There's more side, more, that red line is incorrect then. There's more on the, on non-ocean side than on the ocean side.
There's a little bit of a slope there, so you might have to do some retaining, but I would.
And there's also no crosswalk.
I'm not in favor of the lights on the beach.
Private driveway that we don't have the space to put it.
Okay. So that's, that's the reasoning for Caltrans.
I'd like to have, I'd like to have consensus on getting rid of the ocean side lights at Crow Canyon.
All right, I would second that.
Okay, can we get consensus on that?
This is, this is, I hear what you're saying. I personally do not feel comfortable negating a safety study when I am not a safety expert. And I cannot, with good conscience, tell Cal, tell Caltrans that does this as a profession, that they're wrong and I know better. Now, if you want to do that, I hear you and I, you know, but I, I can't in good conscience do that. I'm sorry.
I am balancing.
You're saying that they need another light at the gas station.
What I'm saying is that I am not a safety expert and that I do not do this for a living. And I, I hear that this has been studied and looked at. And I have to trust the safety experts. But I understand that we want to protect the dark sky. And I think there has been an accommodation and a reduction in lights with a conscientious look at safety. And I, and that's what I have to support.
Well, I'm trying to find a little bit more balance in that.
Well, let me say, they are dark sky compliant.
Yeah, and they're.
And they don't have to make, they could just say, F you, Malibu. We're not even going to make them dark sky compliant. And they have done that for us.
And we could say, great, we won't give you a CDP and have no lights.
They're creating a danger. There's no crosswalk. They're putting in lights for a crosswalk without a crosswalk. There's an underpass underneath the highway, so you don't cross there. And the place closes basically a dusk.
There's already a danger.
Why do you say that?
Because it's dark. They just said much less.
Nobody lives there.
I can take you to a lot of cities in LA that are lit up really, really nice. And there's like, a lot of danger that happens there.
Okay, guys, so we have what, I've voted every, it's on you, Marnie. What are you going to do? We have two completing straw polls right now.
What's the straw poll?
Straw poll is, they're proposing to remove, how many?
I'm proposing to, I'm going to reduce my removal. I'm going to say I'm going to reduce two. Keep one on each side, and that's it.
Or as, and then we have a, one that is basically saying approved as designed. So those are the two choices.
Yeah, I don't personally think that we need all those lights, but I am going to put some amount of trust in the experts that work at Caltrans, much as I don't want to.
So then give them a light on each side.
But I'm going to, because, you know what? There's a girl that spoke tonight, I think it's Brooke, in the gray sweater. And I, is that your name?
Brooke or Bridget.
Bridget. Yeah, one of you. But you know, you said, imagine if this was your best friend or your family member. And I did, I imagined, and I thought, oh my God, I would be so pissed off if we didn't pass this. Exactly as it is, if it was my family member and there were things that could possibly make it safer, I would say, yes, I want that. And the fact that they're dark sky compliant, that's, that's great, because that's what people want. So we want it safer and dark sky compliant. So I, I would say keep it as is, just because I'm going to trust the Caltrans. I don't really trust you, but, and I don't trust you to like, not make a traffic jam and not make it a horrible experience for Malibu, where I'm going to curse you every day. But, but I am, I'm going to trust you that, okay, this is safer. Hopefully you'll listen to Malibu Public Works.
Marnie, I have a question for you. Do you feel that way about all of the lighting then? Okay, so I'm going to save the conversation.
I'm not going to save the conversation.
Okay. So you're going to want to go then to the Zuma View Place.
I'm going to go, we had the residents come in. I live on Zuma, Zumares, I don't live within.
Straw vote was three to two.
I was going to say, we have a straw vote, Commissioner Mazza. All due respect, we have a straw vote. I think I just heard Marnie.
Marnie made, she did make a motion for everything.
Yeah, so it's three to two, right?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know if you've ever driven.
Wait, 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 wait. I think Marnie made a motion to approve the plan as designed.
And I want to say, I didn't walk, walk in here tonight thinking I was going to do that. I walked in here thinking I was going to do something else. So people can make a difference by speaking up.
Yes, hear, hear to that, Marnie.
Marnie, what would you do in Sarah Retreat if somebody took your little road? And took four houses, no, four houses.
But hey, I'm going to stop you because I, first of all, that's private information that you're telling everybody. And, and second of all, it's, this is about the whole community.
This is about the whole community, though. We're talking 15.
Okay, stop. Everyone stop. Okay.
We're talking 15 miles and you're talking.
Commissioner, the chair, the commissioner.
Eight lights, eight lights, four houses.
John, Marnie, both of you guys.
Chair, chair, if I may, I think we do have a motion on the table, if I heard correctly, from Commissioner Cammons, to approve the project as is. But maybe Vice Chair had a friendly amendment that I was hearing.
No, yeah, no, there was a condition with respect to the sidewalk in front of Pepperdine.
Okay, so is that, is that accepted, Marnie?
And also your, and also staff recommendation, the staff recommendation.
With the staff recommendation with the dark sky.
Yes, as in the hearing.
Okay, so that's the motion on the table.
Okay, let's get a roll call, please.
What, what's this for?
This, the project, she made a motion for the project. She's got three votes.
So the motion.
Or we do that, we do.
And I, I don't think it's a great project, but it's, for now, it's good enough. And they will work with, with Malibu.
They cannot work with Malibu. This is a CDP.
But they've already said that they would.
They cannot do it.
So if it's perfect or.
They can, they can remove aspects of the project.
They can as they go. They did, they've done that for other projects. They've made changes as they.
Skylar, are you not, Tyler already clarified that.
So just to be clear on her motion. Her motion is to approve the project as conditioned with the sidewalk, the way that we discussed it. And approve on all the lights as conditioned with the dark sky requirement.
And we have the conditions to read into the record before you vote.
Great.
Rebecca, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chair. Let me just scroll back up a minute. So the motion on the table is to adopt planning commission resolution number 2569 as amended. One, adding a condition of approval to state, Caltrans shall utilize light fixtures that are dark sky compliant to the maximum extent feasible. The light fixtures shall be fully shielded, 3,000 Kelvin in color temperature, directed downward, and must not exceed the light trespass limits onto adjacent properties listed in MMC 17.41.050G, unless necessary for adequate ingress egress as reasonably determined by the Community Development Director. City staff shall inspect the installed lights at the cost of Caltrans and confirm compliance with this condition. Amendment two, adding a condition of approval to state the proposed sidewalk on Pacific Coast Highway in front of Pepperdine University between Malibu Canyon Road and John Tyler Drive is approved so long as Caltrans gathers input on this section sidewalk design from Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles County Fire Department, and Pepperdine University. City staff shall ensure that Caltrans has communicated with and received input from these parties prior to any building permit being approved. Amendment three, approving the signed plan sheets updated on November 3, 2025. Number four, approving the revised plan sheets E29 to E37 dated October 31, 2025. And five, determining the project is categorically exempt from California Environmental Quality Act and approving coastal development permit number 25009 for the installation of 19 new guardrails, 22 new or upgraded curb ramps, 6,956 linear feet of new sidewalks, three new retaining walls, two realigned intersections. I need a replacement number for the new light poles. What is the final count?
Twenty-seven, I think. It was as proposed.
I, I just don't know the number to insert there. Okay, as proposed. 15 miles of new or upgraded bike lanes, a vehicle pullout for law enforcement, news media reconstruction at various locations, and associated roadway improvements along Pacific Coast Highway within the public right of way between Ventura County Line and Sarah Road. Is that your motion?
And one point of clarification on the motion. Our city attorney wanted to add a little bit more language to that second condition about the PCH or the Pepperdine, we'll call it the Pepperdine sidewalk. So the condition would read, the proposed sidewalk on PCH in front of Pepperdine University between Malibu Canyon Road and John Tyler Drive is approved so long as Caltrans gathers input on this section sidewalk design as related to public safety from the LA County Sheriff's Department, LA County Fire Department, and Pepperdine University. City staff shall ensure that Caltrans has communicated with and considered any input received from these parties prior to the building, prior to any building permit being approved.
All right, before we vote, I want to say something. Everyone that came out tonight and wrote letters, I want to thank you. You guys were all participants in the system. You guys made a difference. And there's a lot of things that happened here in Malibu. And please keep involved.
And, when you're done.
And Chair, may I call the roll?
No.
Yes.
I want everybody who came here, and especially the planning commission, to read the Shane letter, which describes the unsafe conditions we are approving tonight. And the Malibu Township Council letter that also shows the unsafe conditions we are approving tonight. Forty to 55% of the people who ride a bike on the highway, rather than getting protected lanes, are going to die. Okay? And that's according to statistics from the federal government. Okay, so just realize that when it happens, whoever votes yes has some responsibility that they abdicated to a, a situation that could have been better and could have saved lives.
I, we listened to our city council and their concerns. And we listened to the public and we're here to.
It's your responsibility.
Commissioner Cammons.
Well, I would actually say that's not our responsibility. I would say it's Caltrans experts.
Well, we are, we are taking a vote, and that's how you're doing. They're not voting, we are.
Michelle Shane is in, in favor of it.
Commissioners, the chair has directed that the roll be called on this vote.
Okay.
Commissioner Cammons?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
John, the secret to perfection is imperfection.
The secret to safety is to be safe.
We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 10:55.
I'm the last one. The last on the list.
Gil, can you let them... Oh, we're on. Okay, I'm gonna open the hearing back up. Next up, we have item 4C. It's a coastal development permit, number 24-014, and variance number 24-025. I'm not gonna read the rest of them. It's an application for a new single-family residence and associated development. It's a continued hearing from October 20th. The address is 20,222 Pacific Coast Highway. Do we have a staff report on that, please? Yes, Richard, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. Good evening, Chair Leonard, members of the Planning Commission. I'll try to make this as brief as possible tonight, and start out with the CDP 2414, the three variances previously articulated, 2425, 2426, and 2427, and an offer to dedicate lateral access along the beach. The vicinity map on the screen showing the exact location of the site along West Side of Coast Highway and the Big Rock Beach area, and then we have a plot plan showing the pre-fire home footprints where the exist, where the proposed project will be placed. Next slide, please. Just a little entitlement history. This project was previously approved back in 2018. It was appealed to City Council in 2019 due to no, not getting three affirmative votes at that meeting. It was approved under minute order, and then went to the California Coastal Commission and approved in 2021 of November in a de novo hearing. The issue to, the notice of intent to issue permit was given by the Coastal Commission, and during the entire, or the building permit process, the California Coastal Commission approval expired, where the city had a three-year expiration, Coastal Commission only had a two-year. So that's the reason why it's coming back in front of this body at this time. Next slide, please. And previously approved, and what's in front of you again is a application for construction of a 2,536-square-foot, two-story, single-family residence with attached two-car garage, a rooftop deck, retaining wall, seawall, and construction of a new onsite wastewater treatment system. The three variances, I'll explain in the next slide, please. And the three variances are for construction on slopes steeper than 2.5 to 1 due to landslide activity, a variance to reduce the required factor of safety, and a variance to reduce the required amount of unenclosed parking to one space, as well as an offer to dedicate the lateral access easement along the beach. Next slide, please. And just a real quick clarification on the staff report and one correction. A site plan review is not required for this project for exceeding 18 feet in height, up to 24 feet for flat roofs, or 28 feet for pitched roofs, as the project is located on the beach, so it's not applicable for this situation. And then on page two, I just wanted to give a quick clarification. It was misrepresented in the report, showing the finished floor level was incorrectly stated, being one foot above the FEMA floodplain level for a total of 22 feet. But consistent with the municipal code and the comprehensive wave run-up report, the applicant coastal engineer prepared, the finished floor is actually at 24.75 feet, and the city's coastal engineering referral approval confirmed and accepted that finished floor elevation. Next slide, please. And then just a quick close-up view of the project site, again, pre-fire situation, showing the extent of the homes going seaward from Coast Highway and the site to be developed. Next slide. And here's a historical view again, showing an oblique on the bottom right of the site prior to the fire and the existing homes that were there, and then the location along Coast Highway in the Big Rock area. Next slide. The current site conditions, the story poles are still up. I know in the staff report, we had stated that they had been taken down. That was, there's a lot of work going on, so that was placed in there in the event that they were taken down, but they are still up as of today, is my understanding, and that is the massing as seen from Coast Highway. Next slide. And then here's a picture of the site plan with setbacks, string lines, pre-fire conditions, showing the building string line, the deck string line, and then the front yard setbacks and the side yard setbacks for the subject property. Next slide. I wanted to go ahead and break down the various floor plans, just for clarity for the public in attendance this evening. This is the lower floor plan, so this will be the most seaward portion of the structure. Next slide. And then we have the proposed first-floor plan, which includes the garage coming off of Coast Highway, and then a portion of the living area above the floor below, previously shown. Next slide. And then this is the second-floor plan, showing the rooftop deck above the two stories seaward, and then the living area above the garage area. Next slide, please. And then I just wanted to throw in the roof plan for clarity, showing the rooftop deck area that is stepped down above the rooftop on the portion closest to PCH. Next slide. And then this is a east elevation perspective, showing the stepping of the structure to maintain two stories throughout, which was previously approved as well. And, next slide, please. And then a cross-section perspective, showing how the, the living areas are set up in the step situation along Coast Highway, showing the small living area above the garage, and then the two living areas above each other with the rooftop deck. Next slide, please. Here's a elevation rendering, again, showing pre-fire conditions with the homes that were previously there. I don't know what the status is on the rebuild for those structures, but just wanted to provide the massing for continuity and context purposes. Next slide. For correspondence, staff has received two letters, or we've received two opposition from two different persons in the public, and one of the persons actually submitted two sets of correspondence, so those have all been forwarded to the applicant. Justin Block, he has also provided responses and correspondence to the commission, I believe, in response to those letters of opposition. And then the most important one is the letter that we received, our email received from the California Coastal Commission, which say they had no objections to the project as proposed and appreciate the offer to dedicate public access. So attesting that it's the same project that was previously approved by this body, appealed to City Council, and eventually approved by California Coastal Commission. Next slide, please. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution determining the project's categorically exempt from CEQA and approving coastal development permit 2014, 2414, variance 2425, variance 2426, variance 2427, and the offer to dedicate 2429. Next slide. And that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna move on to the applicant, Justin. Let's go do disclosures first?
None.
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 None?
None.
Justin?
The applicant team has actually requested that the owner speak first, and she is available to us virtually.
Hello.
Hi there.
This is Kate McCullough. Hi. Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Please accept my sincere apologies for not being there in person. I'm unfortunately sick, and I live out of state, but I remain wholeheartedly committed to seeing this project through, not only because of what it represents architecturally, but because of what it means to my family. Over a decade ago, the late and great architect Tom Torres designed this beautiful home, a vision that captured the timeless essence of Malibu. Seven years ago, I purchased the lot and the plans, which had already been in the city's planning process for three years at that point. My hope was simple and heartfelt to build this home in time for my children to attend Malibu High School and grow up surrounded by this extraordinary community. Since then, we faced just about every challenge imaginable, from neighbor appeals, city and coastal commission delays, to devastating wildfires and water infrastructure redesigns, to the unfortunate missed extension deadline by my late architect. Each setback has come with its share of financial, emotional, and logistical strain. And today, after seven years of waiting, my oldest child is now a sophomore at UCLA, still without a home we dreamed of building together. Shortly after witnessing the devastating fire from devastation from the fire, I listed the property and plans because of the uncertainty of what would happen, and I wasn't sure I had the stomach to go through this process again. On my most recent visit, seeing the pelicans nesting and the dolphins jumping, I realized that the nature, the nature and beauty of Malibu remain intact, and my resolve to build this home has never been stronger. In fact, I'm more determined and more grateful than ever. I want to extend my deepest appreciation to the city staff and commissioners for their time, professionalism, and patience. I know the missed extension created additional work and frustration for everyone involved. I'm sincerely sorry for that. Your efforts to help move this project back on track mean the world to me, and I want you to know how truly grateful I am. I deeply respect the process and responsibility you carry to protect Malibu's integrity while allowing families like mine the opportunity to become part of it. And lastly, in hindsight, I found perspective and even gratitude in the delays, because had everything gone according to plan, my home would likely have stood in the path of the wildfires that tore through Big Rock Beach, and I might be standing here today as one of the many trying to rebuild from ashes. So while the journey has been long and full of obstacles, it has also been humbling and full of lessons. I remain deeply hopeful that tonight marks a turning point, one that allows my family to finally move forward and bring this long-intended home to life. Thank you all truly for your time and understanding and compassion.
Go ahead, Justin.
Chair Leonard, members of the commission, Justin Block, on behalf of the property owner CKGD Heritage Trust and the beneficial owners Chad and Kate McCullough. I'm too gonna try to be quick and save the rest of my time for rebuttal, as I know there's a handful of people here speaking in opposition. As Kate said, this project comes before you for reconsideration. It's gone through extensive review and approval at multiple levels, demonstrating its compliance with applicable codes, mandates, policies, Coastal Act, LCP. It was approved by the Planning Commission in 2018, approved by the City Council on appeal in 2019, approved by the Coastal Commission in 2021. All these entities independently reviewed the project for consistency with LCP, the Coastal Act. They reviewed and analyzed the concerns brought by the project opponents, who have appealed this project at every hearing and every step of the way, and at each time, the project is found to be consistent with LCP and the Coastal Act. This includes the review and making the CDP findings and the findings for the three variances. And I just want to be clear about the variances. There's been a lot of talk in correspondence opposing the project about the size of the structure, about the massing and the scale. We are not asking for a variance or a deviation from the code that relates to the height, size, or mass. Everything we are proposing is by right pursuant to the development standards for beachfront properties in Malibu. The variances are solely to allow this property to be developed in a similar fashion to all the other neighboring properties. As you heard, Coastal Commission ended up hearing this on de novo. They found substantial issue in 2021, and then had a de novo hearing immediately after. They performed their independent research and evaluated the project for consistency with the Coastal Act. The Coastal Commission, what they didn't do in the substantial issue hearing, was find a substantial issue with any concerns brought by the neighboring property owners about height, size, massing, or neighborhood character. The issues that the Coastal Commission had with regard to the project had to do with, deal with sea level rise. Commissioner Mazza, in 2018, you were the one dissenting vote on the Planning Commission, and I believe your concerns related to sea level rise. When this project went to the Coastal Commission, the Coastal Commission wanted the property owner and the team to utilize the most up-to-date science, which was the 2018 sea level rise guidelines. When this project was originally, when the original project was originally filed, it was 2015, and it was before those guidelines came to be. So the project team worked with the Coastal Commission, worked with their coastal engineers and their geologists. They redesigned the project to account for the updated science in the 2018 sea level rise guidelines. So the only changes to the project that were made from when the Planning Commission and the City Council approved this project at the city level was to account for the updated science, to raise the finished floor elevation, to account for the rise in sea level rise and the change in science. The project was ultimately approved by the Coastal Commission, and the Coastal Commission, as Richard said, submitted a letter of support stating that the project that is before you tonight on reconsideration was the same project that they previously approved in 2021, and they had no objections to the project. You heard from, from Ms. McCullough, after the Coastal Commission's approval in 2021, the team began to work with the city to satisfy the conditions of approval from the Coastal Commission in dealing with the Water District. They submitted the plan check. I believe they had actually the Building Department stamp of approval on the plans, but they continued to work with the other city departments in the Water District. Nothing before you tonight has changed since the Coastal Commission approved these plans and since the Building Department stamped the plans. Kate touched on it a little bit. Rest in peace, Tom Torres. Unfortunately, unbeknownst to anyone on our team, or I think anyone in the city, he became very, very sick when they were trying to satisfy the conditions of approval. He had someone from his office come to the city and figure out when the CDP was, was bound to expire. The city told him that it was gonna expire in three years, because that's what the conditions of approval said for the city. However, what they neglected to tell Tom Torres' employee was that the Coastal Commission's conditions of approval that had the CDP expire in two years took precedence, because it was approved in a de novo review. So the team, operating in good faith, was trying to satisfy the conditions of approval and working with the various departments, and when they resubmitted their plans to the city, that's when they found out their CDP had expired. At that point, we tried to reactivate the CDP and do anything we could, and we were told the only thing we could do is file a brand-new CDP for the same exact project, and it would be fast-tracked. It's taken us 18 months to get to a hearing for a project that has been previously approved and reviewed by every single department, and it took us 18 months to get here. Sorry, this is taking a lot longer than I thought. But in sum, what we're asking for you guys tonight is to be consistent and approve this project similar to the Planning Commission did in 2018, similar to the City Council did in 2019, and similar to the Coastal Commission did in 2021. I will leave the rest of the time for rebuttal. I have the new architect, David Rihanna, here, and the coastal engineer, Reg Brown, here, if there's any questions pertaining to that. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a couple of questions in regards to the speaker forms. Darren Graves and Doreen Graves, are they... So Ryan, okay, Ryan, you're gonna be giving a minute to Darren? Right? Is that correct? Okay. And then Doreen, and then, so, and Reg, you're gonna hear for rebuttal?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have Joe and Jan. Okay. All right. So let's go, open it up to public comment. Let's have Joe go first. It's good to have four minutes.
We have a slide show.
If we could put it on the display?
Okay. Hello, Chair, Commissioners and staff. Had I known the codes as well as I know them now, this project likely would not have proceeded six years ago when it first started. Now that we have new leadership in Planning Department, hopefully these noncompliant projects don't continue to delay fire rebuilds that need all the focus right now. Oh, what's being described as a two-story home at 20222 PCH is in fact a three-story structure standing 58 feet above the beach per city's own staff report and the applicant's presentation. That exceeds Malibu's limits by a wide margin. The property was only until yesterday listed for sale at 2.6 million, so the claim that its owner occupied rebuild is misleading at best. When the original story poles were installed, they had to be removed because When the original story poles were installed, they had to be removed because they encroached into live power line clearance, proof that the building itself is too tall for the site. The plans make it plain, a garage level over 14 feet tall with a lower level with two bedrooms around nine feet high, a main level above this with a primary suite, two walk-in closets, and a bath about eight feet tall, and a third floor containing the living room, dining room, and kitchen with a 14-foot ceiling and large ocean deck. From the lowest bedroom level to the ceiling above, the interior height exceeds 31 feet. A structure that tall and 58 feet above the beach cannot reasonably be described as a two-story home. It violates both the letter and the spirit of Malibu's code and its vision to protect neighborhood scale and coastal character. The LIP 3.6 is explicit, in no event shall the maximum number of stories above grade be greater than two. And a basement is not considered a story only if the finished first floor does not exceed three feet above natural grade. Here, a possibly so-called basement sits five feet above grade, so it's a story. Either way, basements are not allowed on beachfront parcels at all under Malibu LIP 3.6-K3. The same section limits flat roof beachfront structures to 24 feet in high and requires height to be a portion from the road's center line that cannot exceed half the building's total height, total length. This proposal ignores both standards. Its dome and full roof line, full-height roof line clearly violates the 24-foot limit and creates a continuous wall facing PCH. This is also not a fire rebuild. The prior house slid into the ocean after the 1983 Big Rock landslide. It was lost to slope failure, not fire. That matters, because this is new development on a known landslide site, not recovery on stable ground. Granting a variance here would be a special privilege, and that finding cannot legally be made. The project starts lower than its neighbor at 20224 PCH, now 24.5 feet above sea level versus 27 feet, which will worsen beach erosion and slope instability. That neighbor's rebuild sits higher, yet remains under 12 feet along PCH preserving views. This project, by contrast, rises more than 30 feet above PCH, nearly three times taller than nearby homes within 500 feet, creating a wall-like mass that dominates the coast. At just 3 feet 4 inches of side setback, it also raises major fire safety concerns, especially given this corridor's recent wildfire destruction. Many nearby homeowners have reduced their home massing to increase defensible space. This project does the opposite. In short, this project is too tall, too many stories, too close, and too unstable for this site. Calling it a two-story rebuild is misleading, and it mirrors the misrepresentation that led council to reject the Malibu Inn Hotel, which also falsely claimed to be two stories when it was actually four. This project stands for outside the spirit of Malibu's vision and mission statements, which call for protecting the city's rural coastal character, scenic beauty, and resident safety. I respectfully urge the Commission to send it back for redesign to meet code as a two-story structure, not three, limit height to 24 feet from the first level, and ensure any new construction fits Malibu's coastal standards and values. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your continued dedication to protecting Malibu's integrity and its fire-impacted families.
Thank you. All right, Darren.
I also have a presentation.
Can I have the display?
Well, thank you for taking the time to hear my issues with the proposed CDP 24014. The issues are plentiful, as they align with everything that I presented to you seven years ago, last time I was here before you. Much has changed in those seven years. Unfortunately, much of the city has burned, including my family's home, which is adjacent to this home or this proposed home. The exhibit in front of you shows the proposed sun study in the morning. As Joe described, the proposed house is obviously much higher than all the neighboring properties, and in the morning, it would completely block any light from hitting the east side of my family's rebuild. In the evening, it would completely block any sunset view from every house to the east of it, much like a three-story house stole the sunset view from the Sutton family over at the Big Rock Tide Pools when it was constructed in 2011, 2012. Allowing such an abomination about a mile away from that three-story abomination is repeating bad past behavior by Malibu planning. How do you change slides? Oh, there, okay. So these are the story poles. As you can see, they are higher than the current telecom lines. That proposes a fire risk. I would ask that if the Planning Commission, this is the old, our family property and proposed lot, if the Planning Commission does approve this, which I guess you could, considering the lawyer did say that it is legal, please put conditions on it to make it a fire-hardened structure. The current proposal is a type V structure with stucco siding and large expanses of glass. The glass does not appear to be fire-rated or tempered in any way. This is essentially a tinderbox that'll be right next to my family's rebuild, within five feet of our exterior finished wall. Our rebuild will be fire-hardened. It'll be two-hour fire-rated on all sides. This doesn't appear to be that way. If you do allow it, please send a message that every home in the very high fire hazard severity zone should be designed in a manner to withstand wildfires, considering they're going to be coming through our neighborhood every five to 10 years. And inviting mansions on the beach, which are not in keeping with the design standard that we should all be abiding by, is an insult to rebuilders, but also an insult to CalFire and the CPSC, considering WI guidelines are now in Chapter 7A of the CFC, and I think everybody rebuilding should be choosing to comply with them. Finally, California Civil Statute gives every homeowner reasonable expectations for privacy. The proposed rebuild takes away those reasonable expectations, as you can see with these perspectives. The roof deck, as proposed, will allow the homeowners to look in on every adjacent property within 100 feet on either side, considering the roof deck is 24 feet above the finished floor of my family's proposed rebuild and the finished floor heights of every other property that will presumably be rebuilt. I know you don't really judge on neighborhood character, but every rebuild will probably be 11 feet tall in maximum height, considering they're going to use like-for-like standards or like-for-like plus 10%. And every home along this stretch of Big Rock Beach was 10 or 10 and 1/2 feet above the sidewalk. The proposed house is 30 feet above the sidewalk, which is a manipulation of the MMC, considering they're using the height of the midpoint of PCH to determine the 28-foot height limit. Well, PCH at our property, the center line is 27 inches above the sidewalk. So they're taking advantage of this massive arc in PCH, which rebuilders are not going to be taking advantage of. So our rebuild is going to be 11 feet tall. This is going to be 30 feet tall. It is almost three times the height of our rebuild and the rebuilds within eyesight on PCH. So if you're going to consider what does Malibu want to be, I guess the question is, is that my turn? Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Doreen?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm so sorry we're all having to spend time again on this proposed build. I'm DeeDee Graves. My family home of over 50 years was next door at 20224 PCH, and next door to this mansionization that they are trying to propose. Seven years ago, we appealed to the Planning Commission not to approve it, but they did. This is a three-story house, not two stories, as noticed in the mailer. The height on the highway side is at the maximum allowed. Every other home on Big Rock Beach was one-story. We are in the process of rebuilding our home like-for-like, one level, exactly the same as it was. The City of Malibu Land Use Plan Policy 6.7 says that beachfront lots, the maximum height is 24 feet above grade with a flat roof. This is not adhered to in these proposed plans, neither the height nor the flat roof. The Coastal Commission, four years ago, approved the plan with 17 contingencies. The attorney didn't say that, 17 contingencies, for them to be able to build it. We want Big Rock Beach to keep its low-key neighborhood atmosphere. This is proposed new build is totally out of character to the area, and you're allowing mansions to come in, and it's just so different than what we had. Thank you.
All right, would you guys like to rebut?
And we do also have a virtual speaker for the side.
I'm so sorry. Okay.
And this is Michael Ballor.
How many speakers do we have?
We have one.
Okay.
Hi, how are you, everybody? I just was up at around, what time is it now, 10:30, just watching my every-other-week Planning Commission meeting, and I just wanted to comment on this particular item. I know there's a lot of pushback, and I just wanted to speak to the applicant and wish them good luck with their build. I know it's a little out of the ordinary with the size and the height, and I know there's concerns, but if you think this is the end of the road, and if you get approved here, it's the end of the story and you'll be cleared, don't believe that, because somehow, some way, someone's going to appeal you. Somehow, some way, it's going to add another 12 months to your timeline, and somehow, some way, your kid's going to end up being probably 26 years old by the time the house is built. So I wish you good luck, and I wish that there could be a resolution where everyone's happy. Even if you do get conditions attached to your home to get it approved, they won't care. They'll still appeal you. So good luck, and that's all I wanted to really say tonight, because I've been a victim of the same conditions of approval, and the process is definitely painstaking, but you just got to stick with it, and yes, good luck, and good night to everybody.
Thank you.
Go. Go on. Whoa, I guess first off, I should thank Michael for staying up. That was very unexpected, so thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to be really quick. Neighbor concerns. One, owner misled the city, never intended to build. You heard from Ms. McCullough, that's clearly not the case. She couldn't build because she couldn't get a building permit, because there was a miscommunication between the city and her architect's office in terms of when the CDP expired. We don't want to be here. Like, this is an unfortunate situation for everyone. We're giving the project opponents a fourth bite of the apple and probably a fifth bite of the apple, and they appeal it and delay us another year. So this is not someplace we want to be. Concerns about community character and visual resources. These were the same arguments that were made in 2018, 2019, 2021. It's been analyzed, it's been vetted by the Planning Commission, City Council, and the Coastal Commission. Project was ultimately approved. I don't want to sound inconsiderate when I say this, but the truth is, we don't know what the community character is going to be for this beach moving forward. We don't know if people are going to ever rebuild. We don't know if they're going to choose to do like-for-like, and we don't, or we don't know if they're going to bring forth a code-compliant project like this. We just don't know what that character of the community is going to be, and I think that is the truth. But what we do know is that when the Coastal Commission analyzed this in 2021, they stated that the proposed project would be visually compatible with the character of the existing surrounding area. So the Coastal Commission did look at this. They did look at all the properties in the vicinity, and they said that it did meet the community character. Rooftop deck. Rooftop decks are allowed by code, and in this specific instance, we're trying to recoup some outdoor area, given that the proposed structure is set back 18 feet from their neighbors. The neighbors' properties are built on state land. We are complying with the code that requires a 10-foot setback from the most landward mean-hide tide line. So if they want to allow us to build on state lands, maybe we wouldn't have rooftop deck, but we're not afforded that possibility now. The variances, these variances are needed to construct a house similar to all the neighboring properties. The site characteristics are no different on our site than all the other sites. They all don't meet the 1.5 factor of safety. They all slope to have a steep slope from PCH to the beach from the cut when they made PCH, and most properties do not supply the four parking spaces. We have two enclosed, and we're asking for a variance to have one unenclosed, because we can't utilize the view corridors on the side to park cars. So we're asking for a reduction. In 2018, when this came before the Planning Commission, we provided exhibit saying if we needed to show four parking spaces, we'd lose half of the habitable space on the ground level. It's not feasible. The talk about mansionization, the habitable area of this house is 2,100 square feet. It's by no stretch a mansion, 25 including the garage. To Ms. Drummond's comments, story poles, as far as I know, the story poles remain. They were always up, they were certified, pictures were taken. The city's story pole policy has a provision that allows the city some discretion to remove story poles if they believe they're a safety hazard. Ours are still up to this day. Issue with the fire department and setbacks. This project meets the setbacks contained in the development standards in LIP, and they've been approved, and the fire department also approved this twice. They approved it in 2015, and they signed a new referral letter, excuse me, referral letter in July 2025 after the Palisades fire. So the fire department looked at this, looked at the setbacks, and they had no issue with it. The whole discussion about stories and heights, the code, as Ms. Drummond says, said that there should not be more than two stories at any one point. So the question is, at any one point, are there more than two stories? And if you look at the definition of stories, the answer is no. The height, you split the structure in half. The landward side is measured from the center line of PCH. If you measure our, the garage and the area above it, that's a stack, two stories. Barrel roof is less than 28 feet from the center line of PCH. You take the ocean side half, right? You have the lower level and the main level and a rooftop deck. Rooftop deck does not meet the definition of a story, because it doesn't have a roof on it. So that's another stack with two stories. From the finished floor elevation at 24.75 to the railing at the rooftop deck, it's about 21 feet. So that's under the 24 height limit on the ocean side. Stories that, context, this is not a fire rebuild. Ms. Drummond is correct. What she is incorrect about is that this property failed in a slide and fell into the ocean. The property was damaged after the El Nino storms in 82, 83. They gave the property owner at that time the ability to repair it or remove it. They submitted a demolition permit, excuse me, they applied for a demo permit, and they received a demo permit, and they removed the house. It didn't slide into the ocean. Mr. Graves spoke about light and solar access and views. Solar access is not part of any CDP or variance finding. My understanding is to analyze the solar access of a property that is for an SPA or a site plan review finding. Our project does not have a site plan review pending for this project, so it's not applicable. He talks about blocking sunsets from their house, but I think beachfront properties' views are protected by stringline standards. Our property is set back 18 feet from the previously existing houses on either side. We are literally in a gully. Our rooftop deck is 18 feet landward from their property. With that being said, I am running out of time. Do you have anything to say? Sorry. Respectfully request you to follow past city action, Coastal Commission action, and approve the project. All the findings have already been made. You've got 15 seconds, buddy.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Reg Brown. I'm the coastal engineer from the beginning of this project, and I'm here just to answer any technical questions you may have regarding the design process of this house.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to bring it back up to the dais here and open hearing. All right, who would like to go first?
Can we have just some staff clarification on some of the points that Joe did bring up about it being three stories, 58 feet tall, and that that exceeds Malibu's limits? Do you have any clarification on that, and also primary view determination on beachfront?
Sure. So as the applicant mentioned, for beachfront properties, you cut the building in half. The landward half gets measured from the center line of the road, which would be center line of PCH, so it does account for the curvature of the road. On the seaward half, it gets measured from the lowest recommended finished floor. And in this case, what they have is basically two sections, one that is compliant when measured from PCH, cut that in half, and the lower half is compliant as measured from the lowest recommended finished floor. It's not dissimilar from hillside projects, where they do a stacked design, where they have multi-levels, but, you know, one elevation is up here and another elevation is up here, and they follow the topography. That's what they're utilizing in this application.
So they're, is it sort of like they're, they are with, they're not exceeding the limits?
They're consistent with the way height has been measured on beachfront properties and in general in the city.
Okay. Can I ask a question, Tyler?
Go ahead. Sorry, go ahead. You're getting tired.
So has there any, is there anything that has substantially changed that we should be aware of?
So, uh, has there any, is there anything that has substantially changed that we should be aware of for the entire process that this project has already gone through? Is there anything different in our codes? Have, are we looking at anything different than the, than what this project has gone through from the Planning Commission to the appeals, to City Council, to the Coastal Commission, to the letter from the Coastal Commission, to sta, is there something new that we should, need to be educated on?
Uh, in terms of the physical design of the structure, no. Height setbacks, uh, all of that is the same. Um, what is, has been adopted since then is some new restrictions on landscaping, which this project I don't think has really much of, and dark sky lighting, which, which this is conditioned to comply with.
I have a question. Uh, some of Dylan's, uh, uh, comments about the fire rating, aren't all new construction required to have tempered windows and a special, yeah?
I don't think we have the expertise in the House to answer that question tonight.
Okay, that's a building and safety question?
Yes.
John, has a question.
Go ahead, John.
Has, since the, uh, the permit expired, uh, a lot of this staff report is basically based on the, the prior approval, um, which is pretty old. Uh, has the FEMA flood plan changed at all? Is it exact, is it the same as the fire rebuilds are using?
They do have to comply with FEMA. Um, if, if you wish, Reg would, can speak to that a little better from an engineering standpoint.
Okay. Thanks for asking that question, John. Um, the FEMA maps, um, were, were produced in 2016 and we, uh, conformed to those FEMA maps. Um, they were adopted, uh, formally adopted in 2021. Uh, the house does extend into a VE zone on the FEMA map, uh, so we have to comply with the BFE. Now, the BFE in, in this area is, uh, leave elevation 21. Um, per the City of Malibu Public Works Department, we have to add one foot onto that. So at 22, that represents not the finished floor elevation, but the bottom of the lowest horizontal structural member. Finished floor is gonna be above that. So that, that elevation, BFE plus one, represents the bottom of, say, the beam, the horizontal beam, su- supporting the floor structure above that. And we, we conform, as, as it is submitted to the city today, we conform to all the FEMA requirements.
Okay, and, and, uh, the wave uprush study hasn't changed since 2015?
Uh, the wave uprush study has changed slightly due to sea level rise, changes in the sea level rise. Um, the original project was designed for a sea level rise of 6.15 feet. Um, and we left that there, um, because the elevation was, uh, the run-up elevation on that was at 26. Um, but that was up at the road. So you'll notice how the, the, the building rises as you get closer to the road, the wave uprush goes up underneath the house. And, uh, the current sea level rise for what we're doing for, for instance, the fire rebuilds, uh, for a 100-year sea level rise, Coastal Commission report of 2024 actually lowered the, the sea level rise expectations to 4.5 feet for the year 2126.
So you're actually above, above the, what the rebuilds have to do?
Um, we are, uh, slightly above that, yes.
Okay, and, uh, do you have anything to do with the geology?
No.
No, okay.
I, I have a couple of questions maybe for Justin or the architect in regards to the fire resiliency of the new build.
Hi, I'm David Ray from Residential Design Works.
Okay, so what are the requirements for, uh, new construction in regards to fire resiliency?
So what they're presenting, um, because I'm not the original architect on the project. I was brought in recently on it and I review the existing plans. And the stucco obviously is a one hour on all sides. The windows, um, as far as I know, any, I have to review the plan because I didn't draw the plan, but as far as the fire for the windows, if they're tempered, that's all that matters. And if that's the element that, you know, when we go through building and safety, because we're gonna have to take this back to building and safety and everything else because of the code changes and so forth. So, and also with fire. So basically what's gonna happen is if they have to be tempered, then they'll be tempered glass. It doesn't require unless they're in a fire zone four, which I believe they are, it has to be tempered. So they're gonna be tempered.
Yeah.
So.
That's what I, I, that's what I thought. That's what I just, you know, he brought up the concern.
Yeah, he said that the, the windows aren't tempered, but in a fire zone four, they have to be dual pane tempered.
Yeah, that, uh, okay, thank you.
Yes, and they will be.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask the city attorney a question? Uh, if you look at, uh, deed restriction number 102 in the, uh, resolution, it, it, and I'm not an attorney, obviously, but it, it restricts the, the property owner to be liable for everything. Uh, but it doesn't say anything about the successors. Shouldn't it say something about the successors? Or notification of successors? Because if they, if they flip the house, this is in a.
Would that go to any property owner, property owner of record at any time?
Yeah, I could, I could lead off, maybe, Kellen. Um, so this is our standard deed restriction language for this type of project that is along the coastline and it follows the property because it's recorded, it's recorded on the, on the title.
But it doesn't, it, it, it may be recorded, but it isn't recorded against anybody other than the current property owner.
It's reported against the address.
It's recorded against the property, so anyone that buys it, buys it with that deed restriction on it.
Okay, so that doesn't need to be changed. Um, and then, uh, this is for Tyler, the, the lighting restriction, I gotta find that. Uh, it.
It has to be dark sky compliant.
Yeah, but it, but there's a questionable area there. Yeah, but dark sky compliant is different. Uh, what, let me find it here.
Well, he's finding it. Can I just ask about the privacy issue that Darren brought up? That, is there any protection on privacy that they're gonna be kind of, uh, he was saying the roof deck compromises the privacy of all the neighbors?
Um, there's no direct findings you need to make related to privacy. Uh, previous planning commissions have imposed conditions to help protect the neighbor, so that's something you guys can consider.
Is there? Yeah.
Well, it's hard on this one because the, I mean, uh, right, well, and the house, the proposed house will kind of look over the other houses, uh, you know, but on other projects where there's like elimination of glass on one side, of windows on one side to kind of keep privacy, there's, uh, putting a screen on the deck for one property to keep, you know, the visual out of their, out of their backyard. So there's different mechanisms depending on what the visual is trying to achieve.
You have a question? I have a question for you, Tyler. This is more about just the fire rebuilds on the beachside. So if someone decided to do a CDP and build something bigger on their fire rebuild lot, would they be losing their, uh, some of the aspects of the governor's order or some of the, like, for example, the septic or that type of thing?
Yes, they would not be consistent with the governor's order, so they would have to basically follow the same path that this applicant is proposing.
So, okay.
Okay, I found my question if I could. Um, on the, on number 21, 20 of the, which is lighting starts at 15 and number 20, it, it's unclear to me on rooftop decks. I'm very, there's been a lot of complaints about rooftop decks on that stretch of the beach from people looking down on them. And it says, motion sensors shall be programmed to extinguish 10 minutes after activation, but it doesn't, that appears to be related to number 19. And what I'd like to do is make it clear and say that, uh, that, that applies to the rooftop deck. It has to be a motion sensor, mess, motion sensor activated. And the way I read this, just because it's the next number, it says, string lights are allowed, and then the next one is motion sensors shall be programmed.
They are not connected, 19 and 20 conditions, but you can certainly add that, but I don't think it's necessary.
So I could add a condition?
Yeah, you can. And I just want to point out 21 real quick, Commissioner Maza, that, um, the dark sky ordinance does not allow lighting above 18 feet on residential properties. So, uh, 21 will, uh, capture that and we have this specific thing only if required by building code because sometimes an egress light on a deck is required, but other than that.
Yeah, well, that's what I would, that's, I was, wasn't gonna rely on that because people are gonna light up their, their rooftop decks. I mean, why, why do they have them if they're not gonna light them?
Well, they're not.
That would be prohibited.
It would be prohibited because it's over 18 feet with the rooftop deck, because you're not allowed to do that. There are only gonna be allowed one light fixture for ingress and egress of the door up there.
Correct.
Is that something that somebody could enforce if somebody lit it up?
That is, yeah. Not only a condition of approval, but that is within the ordinance that would be a code enforcement violation.
They won't be able, they won't be able to build it either.
Because I know there's complaint, complaint about a house there that's, okay, and then, um, number 25, it says they have to have their, their, um, beachfront stairs, three foot setback from the property lines. Okay, but this has got a, uh, horizontal a- access or a public easement, and I would assume that you're not gonna put stairs in the public easement. So shouldn't that say, not from the property line, but from the easement line?
Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, is there a vertical access easement on this, on this project?
It's a lateral access easement extortion is what it should be called.
Lateral access, not vertical.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. You're not allowed to put, um, yes, you're not allowed to put structures within the easement. So if you want to make that clarification, we could add that to the condition.
Okay, so, so if I just change the word property line to easement line, that would be, that would fix it?
Sure, and we can even just say no development is, is authorized within the lateral access easement.
See, is that something I should have attorney do or we want to do it on the fly?
I think Tyler's recommendation, instead of changing 24, just add to the end of 24. Sorry, minus 24, 25.
Okay.
If you want to read that. No development in the lateral.
Yeah, no development is authorized in the lateral access easement.
Yeah, so add that to 25.
I have a question. Uh, Kellen or Tyler, what is the reason for the lateral access easement of this property?
I would not be able to answer that because.
It's just, it's just public access along, along the coast.
Did Coastal say that that was a requirement of their condition of approval?
Yes.
They did.
Yeah. It, it typically is when you get to that level. We don't always require at the city level.
It's total extortion.
The Coastal Commission.
It is total extortion.
It's extortion is something nobody's ever gonna use. I mean, you got 1,700 feet, you gotta walk to get there. You have to get 1,700 feet of lateral accesses, okay? So it's.
You're gonna be chipping away at them with each fire rebuild that comes in for a CDP.
They don't have to get a CDP. They get stamped by Tyler.
As long as you like flight plus 10%, let's make sure that's clear.
Can I make a motion to approve item 4C?
I, I second that with the addition of the, uh, language to number 25.
And Commissioner Peak, you're accepting that?
Yep.
And, uh, Chair, is it okay for me to call the roll?
Yep, roll call, please.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamens?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move your chair.
Uh, can I ask if there's any appetite to at least, to at least ask whether or not Commissioners have any issues that they feel will require substantive discussion for 5A?
I'm good to go forward with it.
Sorry, yeah, we're, we're the last item. The smallest project on the whole agenda tonight.
We have no public speakers slipped as well.
Okay, let's go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a staff report, please?
I'm sorry, uh, let me read it first. I'm, next up is 5A. It's, uh, a coastal development permit number 24-068 and minor modification number 25-006, an application for an addition and remodel of a single, uh, family residence at 24840 Pacific Coast Highway. Do we have a staff report?
All right, good evening, Chair Leonard, members of the Planning Commission. We made it. So, um, yeah, the item before you, uh, is a CDP 2468 with a minor modification request, uh, for a, uh, reduction in the side yard setback. Okay, this property is located at 24840 PCH, uh, as you see here on the screen. Uh, this is, uh, just south of PCH, north of Malibu Road, west of Bluffs Park. Um, as you can see, it's surrounded by similar single-family residential development east and west. Um, this, I chose this picture because the purple here shows the appeal available jurisdiction. So the, um, southern portion of this property contains the main, uh, residence and that is located within the appealable jurisdiction. So, um, the project before you is an exterior remodel with a minor addition to an existing single-family residence. That includes demolition to 32% of exterior walls, uh, 267 square foot addition, which is about, uh, 5.7% over existing, and a partial roofline alteration, increasing height from 10.5 feet to 15 feet maximum. Uh, there's also a conversion of 162 square feet of concrete driveway to, uh, firm book gravel and two underpinning, uh, two piles underpinning along the southern facade, as well as an interior remodel. And there's also a discretionary request, like I mentioned, uh, for up to a 20% reduction to the west side yard setback. Okay, so now why is this a CDP? Uh, there's a, uh, there's two reasons for that. There's a future improvements deed restriction issued by the Coastal Commission in 2003, um, that requires a CDP for significant improvements to the property. Uh, in addition to that, there's a, um, larger than 10% increase in height to the main residence. Uh, as I pointed out earlier, it's 10.5 feet to 15 feet, so that's definitely more than 10%. Um, and this is located in the appealable jurisdiction, uh, so that, that applies, so. Um, and also as part of this, uh, application, we've got the minor modification, um, which is needed to accommodate the, the proposed vertical bulk that's along the western portion of the property, uh, that does encroach one foot into the required side yard setback. Okay, so here's the proposed plan. Um, so it's a, it's a long, kind of skinny lot, but, uh, north to the right, you got the ocean to the left. Um, and this shows the, the main residence. You've got the, um, then accessory structure further north. Um, you got, um, the driveway, then you've got, as you go further north, we've got the pool, poolhouse, tennis court, more driveway, and then you get to the, uh, PCH area of the property. So some more depictions of the plans here. So on the left, we've got the, um, exterior remodel portion showing the demolition to exterior walls. So you've got your, um, the demo replaced in blue and your, uh, demo and then to accommodate the addition, uh, shown in red. So you have those up, you get, uh, 32% of the exterior walls. To the right, uh, that shows where the new vertical bulk is proposed. Um, so there's a larger portion to the, to the back of the house, um, and a smaller portion, uh, closer to the, um, the southern facade. Um, and again, this house is only 10.5 feet tall, so it's a minor increase in height, uh, to one portion and a few feet more on the other section. So here are some elevations to help show where those additions are. Um, again, up top, you've got the southern elevation, uh, so therefore the western side is where the, the taller part is proposed, a 15-feet tall portion. And then on the eastern side, you've got the roughly 12-foot tall portion. Um, on the lower part of the screen here, we get, uh, a western elevation. The lower part of the screen here, we've got a western elevation, so that shows again the, the proposed vertical bulk located to the back of the house, and then that smaller portion a little bit further to the east. Okay, like I said earlier, there's some underpinning proposed as part of this application. We've got two piles proposed. Now, we looked at this carefully when this came in because, you know, this is considered, you know, increased foundation, and we wanted to be cognizant of the bluff top setback. So we used the bluff top analysis that was from 10 years ago for the same property. There are actually two applications, I think, two, one in 2013, one in 2015, that proposed a new house that was further north that complied with the bluff top setback. It was totally moved. This is, you know, the original house, as you can see, a good portion of the house is, is within that setback. However, we want to be sure that these piles that are proposing are, are at least 50 feet away. So this exhibit shows that. Okay, so correspondence, we've got zero letters received in opposition of the project. In closing, we recommend that you adopt planning commission resolution 2579, determining the project is categorically exempt from CEQA and to approve the CDP and minor mod as conditioned or amended by planning commission. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Do you want to do disclosures or?
I have none.
None?
None.
None?
None.
Okay. Does applicant want to give their presentation? None? Okay, all right, we'll bring it up to the dais.
I move approval.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Rebecca, vote, roll call?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamens?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Marnie, we'd like to make a commissioner comment, please.
Not on this project. Just before we adjourn, I did have a, something I wanted to say to Paul's comment at the beginning of the meeting, Paul Grissani. I think we do a really good job, and I think we work really well together. Sometimes we're not super polite and people get heated, and we're all doing the best we can, and we're maybe not, you know, as well-mannered as Paul, but I, I don't think that was warranted to scold us like that, so that's just my thoughts.
I'll second that. Carries.
I'll say there's a reason why he wasn't reelected.